Exeter Hattock meeting. A few normal reminders, nothing too adverse, we hope. For those who are joining us remotely, please keep your microphones on mute and indicate by raising a hand if you wish to participate. Could I ask all of you here, if you've got mobile phones, if they can be on silent, the tones can be entertaining at times, but sometimes distracting as well. So if you could put your phones on mute, that would be most helpful. All speakers will come to the microphone and my committee clerks will allow you your time. Please do not stray too much over your time if you can help it, because I wouldn't want to stop your flow, but at the same time, keep within your time limits. All committee members have had their papers and hopefully read them in advance. And I also know that committee members have received numerous correspondence and reports, et cetera, which I expect they will refer to if they wish in their comments during the debate. Presentations will be displayed, et cetera. I'll just make one point on general methods of debate. As much as we welcome the public to this and we enjoy your participation through speaking, it is not a reality TV show. So please contain your views. If you're in favour of something or against something or don't like something somebody said, please restrain your mood. I've been in that position as well, sat on both sides of the bench and can fully understand when you think on a particular heated issue, there are concerns on both sides. But please listen with respect to your elected members, whether you agree with them or disagree with them. And hopefully then we will all take in what is said and arrive at a decision. Thank you. So first of all, call on the two tell us apologies for absence.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. The committee has received apologies from councillor Thomas Richardson and councillor Andrew Ledbetter. Councillor Ledbetter is involved in interviewing for a director position today.
And councillor Richardson has a work commitment that he cannot get out of. Could I ask whether any members have any item to declare under the declaration of interest in regard to any item that might appear on this, has appeared on this agenda? Thank you. We have next the item three on your agenda are the minutes of the meeting of the 15th of July, which have previously been circulated. Are you happy that I sign those as an accurate record of what took place at that meeting? I have a proposal from another second. All those in favour of accepting those minutes, please show. Thank you. Items requiring urgent attention, none have been notified to us in advance. Chairman's announcement. I have none, thank you to make. Items requested by members to appear on the agenda, or, and this is of interest to all new members of the committee, you are allowed through council constitution to place any item affecting your own division or other divisions in Exeter if you approach the other members concerned on this agenda for discussion. So start with questions that have been put by councillor Lyn Westonhall. Would you like to read out your question, please, Lyn?
Thank you, Chair. So this is about school streets, which the county council is now saying that they are going to be looking into. Will Devon County Council be following the Active Travel England guidance on setting up school streets? Will the road safety team be the lead team for school streets work, which is my understanding is best practice in other areas? Will there be an internal criteria based document used to select the most appropriate schools in a fair and transparent way that ensures the most credible schemes are selected first? And finally, it would be useful to have an update on which Exeter schools or schools in Exeter have shown interest in school, in having a school street scheme and any decisions already taken about which schools might be first in line, subject to funding, for getting a scheme. Thank you.
Call on the officer to reply.
Yes, thank you. I can reply to that. So yes, we are planning to roll out a trial of school streets in addition to those we already have. It will be delivered by the road safety team, but we still have to discuss how we're going to work this out in terms of the wider team. There may be some involvement from the transport planning team. Yeah, I could speak up, okay. And the third question is in relation to which schools. So the plan as it is, is initially to focus on schools where recent active travel activity has taken place. For example, Newtown, which is going to have some improvements happening there soon, also at Ladies Smith School and Whipton Barton School, these are the schools we may first consider because we have had engagement with those schools. And once a trial has been, you know, in place for some time, then perhaps once successful, they can be rolled out to other schools. Does that answer your questions? There was a fourth question, sorry.
I would, I mean, I would commend to you, and I can send it to you, a more robust set of criteria to decide on which schools to pick. West Berkshire is a best practice authority on school streets, and they've sent me their criteria by which they have a very transparent way of deciding which schools to go forward with. I'm quite surprised to hear Newtown, although it is in my ward, it doesn't seem to me to have anything like the issues of other schools. Like St Leonard's, for example, has much more serious school run problems. So I can send you that thing, but I would urge that you consider something more robust for deciding on the schemes than simply saying what has had recent active travel activities. That's not, doesn't seem a very robust criteria to me. So it would be really good to perhaps get something a bit more worked up on that. Thank you very much.
That's fine. Thank you. We will consider that. Thank you.
Two items on standing order 23 subsection two, which will let members to raise matters on the agenda placed by myself. So I'm not taking a privileged position. I'm using the same opportunity that all of you have got to place items on the agenda. The first item has been resolved in that I've spoken to the officer concerned. This was relating to something promoted by Alderman Prowse, my predecessor in this ward, and a decision had not been carried through. I've now discussed it with the officers and we're now in a process to proceed on advertising the changes, some of the changes suggested. So thank you for that intervention. The second item is one that I've tried through several routes, as members will know, including our famous portal, to get clear responses to members, residents, again, through councillor Prowse, have previously campaigned on this issue. This is in relation to the Stoke Hill Estate in my division, which had a parking review in 2016 and changes were introduced at that time. The parking situation in that area has deteriorated as far as residents are concerned, and they wish a further parking review to take place. This is further exacerbated by a planning decision by Exeter City Council for a car free development at Exmouth Junction, which involves several hundred vehicles, none of which we disapprove of. But at the same time, the view of residents is this will put further pressure on their neighbourhood of people trying, if they have cars, to find somewhere in the locality to park them. So their concern is that they want a parking review carried out as soon as possible, so that they can come back to this committee and go in the list of future works, so that the situation doesn't deteriorate any further than it is at the moment. And I know there is S106 money tied up with the Exmouth Junction development, but I think that is separate. My understanding was largely being used for the Union Road Stoke Hill roundabout changes, not necessarily for a parking review. And to me, I would hope the officers and members would support a review of this area as soon as possible. Thank you. An officer response.
Yes, councillor Mitchell, I can respond on this one. Obviously, apologies if you felt the response with members portal wasn't sufficient. Obviously, there are routes we can sort of deal with that rather than bring it to the committee. But I should highlight, obviously, the committee previously has considered residents parking across a large number of areas in Exeter and prioritised those for delivery. We're currently working on the Woodwater Lane area, and we've got about three or four more requests upon that list. And that's where the resource has been prioritised. Obviously, the request for the Stoke Hill area was set aside to run parallel because of the development money that was incoming. And obviously, yes, I appreciate it's taken longer than we'd anticipated for that money to come forward. But I can confirm the invoice has now been issued for that money. So we are expecting it to be paid imminently. And once that comes through, we can then obviously begin work on it. Ultimately, there is no other resource set aside to do this, which is why we must make for this funding to come through.
I'll learn myself a supplementary question. Is, can you give the residents and myself any indication of time scale when this review might take place?
Obviously, once, once the bill's been paid, obviously, we've got proposals from previously. So again, we'll start discussions with yourself about the detail of that, those proposals and the consultation process. But obviously, at the moment, we're waiting for them to pay the bill. But we are fairly well advancing, given previous discussions and proposals. So we should be able to get on with it fairly quickly. But in terms of specific time scales, I can't provide that, this precise time.
Thank you for fairly quickly. On to item seven, which are in regard to petitions. We have received three applications for petition or petitioners. I think two of them are involved with one petition. So I'd first of all call on James Diamond to discuss, from the Exeter Cycling Campaign, to present his petition. And you have five, up to five minutes, and somebody will start a timer when you're, when you're ready, not.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair. The trustees of the Exeter Cycling Campaign are petitioning you today on behalf of our 1800 supporters. We are a local road safety charity governed by the Charity Commission. We believe everybody in Exeter deserves the option of safe, affordable travel by foot, wheels or bike. At our AGM, our members voted to make the completion of the E9 strategic cycle routes and safe streets in Wanford a top priority. That's why we're here today to support you in delivering it. We have one simple and we believe reasonable ask: keep Dryden Road safe, usable and attractive for people walking, cycling and wheeling. We're not here to debate whether bollards stay or go. It's about keeping people safe. We're ready to help you do that, but we don't yet know what problem you might wish to solve. The report in front of you today rules out many possibilities. Road safety? Well, collisions have halved since the filter was installed. That's fewer hospital visits, fewer broken bones, lower car insurance and fewer lives disrupted. All of that for the cost of half a pedestrian crossing. Congestion or air pollution? Again, no. Thousands fewer vehicles now pass through the heart of Wanford each day. The report tells you that all junctions are operating well within capacity. Making Dryden Road unsafe would add a car every six seconds during school run hours to the heart of Wanford, right past homes and through the walk to school route. And it would undermine your own air quality action plan, the commitment to provide an alternative to car travel to tackle illegal air pollution at East Wanford Hill. Is it lack of uptake? Well, every report Hattock has ever received on this scheme has demonstrated double figure percentage increases in walking and cycling. And you've just started a consultation on Barnfield Gateway, celebrating that very success. These are the same people that rely on Dryden Road. Is it that Dryden Road could be safe without any measures? The government's expert body in the report in front of you says otherwise. Without the filter, the report says the road poses a critical safety risk, and that it would exclude less confident people like women, children and disabled users. This is a strategic cycle route in your own active travel plans. Is it emergency services? I wouldn't dream of speaking for the emergency services. I have no knowledge. But the report in front of you tells you they have not raised any concerns. So what's left? There certainly are issues that you might wish to address. Every transport scheme has them. Wanford House needs access for a few emergency transfers each week. You knew that in 2022 when the decision was made? The hospital isn't asking for removal. It's asking you to make Dryden Road unsafe, but it does want to explore alternatives. And they've asked for safer crossings on Bovymores. Yes, please, from the Exeter Cycling Campaign. Parking and cars affect the park and ride bus. Again, that was known in 2022 when the decision was made. And maybe it is time for you to look at new solutions. And some people want all routes open to all cars. But the impact is minimal, an extra 90 seconds and affects 180 peak time journeys. There are 140,000 daily car trips in Exeter, according to your county council. So please be clear about what problem you wish to solve and keep Dryden Road safe. We commend the approach you took at Denmark Road on the E9 cycle routes. When Magdalen Road caused displacement, officers developed a solution, consulted and implemented it, and you've just delivered it. Everyone won. No one suggested ripping out the scheme and starting over. If you believe Dryden Road does need improvement, please take the same approach, asking, how do we make this better? Not how do we make it unsafe? We are asking, but the report reminds you that you also have a legal duty. You must provide safe highways for all users. The current scheme complies with government guidance, has reduced road danger and injuries and enables active travel. That sounds like a good definition of safe. Removing the filter without a safe alternative would create critical safety risks. That's not our opinion. It's in the report in front of you. So we ask, be clear about the problem you wish to solve. Develop solutions with the stakeholders and implement them so the scheme can be even better. And above all, whatever you decide, please keep the walking, cycling and wheeling route that you promised, safe for children walking and cycling to school, safe for nurses cycling to work and safe for people in mobility suitors who just want to get around the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that 20 seconds left, but thank you very much for that. Could I point out the normal procedure is with petitions on the petition scheme that they're noted and an officer will respond in X number of days. As all the petitions and speakers today are speaking on item eight, I see this as a precursor to that debate and discussion on item eight. So therefore, I think it ameliorates the need for us to respond if the petitioners are present in writing after the debate, if they've been present for the debate when the issue is being determined. Thank you. So I now call upon Helen Montgomery. You also have five minutes when you are ready to start.
Please accept this online petition, which currently stands at around 2,300 signatories. Forgive me if I am nervous, as I don't usually involve myself with petitions, councillors, committees or local politics. Along with a paper petition previously handed to this committee, it totals around 4,000 signatures, mostly local residents. We, the underside, want Dryden Road to be reopened in both directions to motor vehicles as soon as possible. We believe that exists an opportunity to provide safe alternative options to accommodate pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles. The current restrictions have led to displaced traffic on nearby residential roads, most of which are narrower than Dryden Road, and onto already busy and congested bus routes. Local residents believe this has created unsafe and unhealthy walking routes, especially to nearby schools and nurseries. I said earlier that I don't usually get involved with local politics, but I am a local resident who has lived in the area for 54 years. In the past, I have worked locally in the RDNE Hospital, Dennis Taylor Nursing Home and Dean Court Care Home. I have two sisters with their partners who also live locally, two of which work at the RDNE Wanford. I'm currently at full time care of my 32 year old daughter, Ashley. She is registered blind and suffers from Haroldus syndrome and is confined to a wheelchair. We are regular visitors to the RDNE Hospital. So why did I get involved with this petition? Officers may say in their slideshow, they do not have enough evidence yet to recommend reopening Dryden Road. I say walk in my shoes. Experienced walking up to the hospital with a wheelchair, you will experience increased poor air quality as vehicles idle in Bovymores Lane or worry that buses and cars that maintenance pavement to pass each other will pose a danger to my daughter in her wheelchair. We have had numerous near misses when trying to cross narrow, now busier roads on Wanford Street and Bovymores Lane due to the increases since Dryden Road closed. As my neighbours, each will have a story, and none of them were asked what they thought before Dryden Road was closed. So I ask you to listen to 4,000. My community, my neighbours, and all the health workers and the hospitals that care for us all, and take step to put this right. Reopen Dryden Road today.
Thank you. That was two and a half minutes. Well done. Can I now call upon Terry Crocker to speak to us? And before you speak, Terry, can I thank you for your very detailed, very detailed report, which every committee member has had? And can I say how well it was laid out, how clear, and as a layperson, how easy it was to follow. So thank you. And perhaps you should set up a consultancy for public action groups.
Right.
So I'll call upon you to present your petition and five minutes.
Chair, members, I'm sorry if my voice fades away, but I have got a lung condition. I'll do my best. I'm submitting this petition on behalf of residents who want Dryden Road being reopened. Almost a quarter of the signatories are actually from Church Terrace, Baker Street and Sherwood Close. I say that because those residents weren't given a consultation letter. They were left off completely. You're now aware DCC failed to undertake traffic counts, and perhaps, and more importantly, and in my opinion, negligently failed to undertake pedestrian counts in the Bovymores Lane and Church Lane area. Before closing, before closing Dryden Road, that should surely have been undertaken, because it was understood that Bovymores Lane, the Holdenview Terrace would be the alternative route. It took until the 17th of July this year, thank you, Chairman, that the first census was undertaken. And that was undertaken on the Carlisle Road, Bovymores Junction. But no vehicle or censuses were undertaken at the Church Street A and E Junction, or indeed on the Church Lane one, which gives access to the hospital. To the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been a pedestrian count or census taken anywhere in the area. But that was one of the things you directed, how it was impacting the residents. Members supported a review. This is what the highways report said. Members supported a review to be undertaken on the impact that diverted traffic was having onto the surrounding area of Dryden Road. So why weren't there vehicle statistics at A and E and Church Lane, or more importantly, perhaps, pedestrian statistics for Bovymores Lane, Church Lane and Holdenview Terrace? That's the same issue as when Dryden Road was initially closed. No statistics, no impact. Our three 90 minute census statistics were gathered on three dry days, luckily for us. On all three surveys, one or more cyclists were involved in the counts. The consolidated statistics for those three surveys revealed that the total number of pedestrians and cyclists on Dryden Road was 379. The pedestrians and cyclists and numbers in the area of Bovymores Lane, the Holdenview Terrace was 1,902. Numbers using the four crossings along the Bovymores Lane, Church Lane area was 1,839. That shows just over five times as many pedestrians and cyclists were subjected to more danger and indeed still are than those using the safer Dryden Road. We say that is illogical and totally unacceptable, hence my negligently comment earlier. No census was undertaken by DCC at the hospital ingress, exit, egress on Church Lane. On that junction on one count, we saw 520 vehicle movements in 90 minutes. Additionally, there are 45 cyclists who use that point, which was one less than on the safer Dryden Road. DCC have effectively increased traffic around the area of the A and E entrance, resulting delays for blue light ambulances. That can't be right. So what's the answer? I'll explain that later. The original consultation process, we believe, was seriously flawed with little or no regard for those who'd also be impacted by the Dryden Road closure. That's despite Active Travel England stating that councils are required to consult with their local communities to ensure schemes are supported and meet local needs. That didn't happen for us, and it certainly doesn't meet our needs and never has. I now turn for the report and public consultation report that was presented to Hattock on 17th of January 2022, when the conclusion decision was made.
Terry, you're up to your five minutes, but as the previous speaker is on the same topic, didn't use all the time, I'll let you eat into a little of that. So another minute and a half, please.
Oh my gosh. Okay. Okay, on that one, there is a variety of errors that were reported, which are in the report. A recent Freedom of Information request requesting 54 addresses, obviously not the actual physical address, but street names, that's been refused, won't give it to us, even though other street names were recorded. As we've been advised, no one really knows what the votes were assessed because the information apparently has been deleted on computers. But I believe a consultation data for cycle routes under DCC retention rules should be held for the current plus six years. I turn to the new report. Unfortunately, that report is also flawed. And I'll thank Ian for letting everyone know about that. The statistics showing the increased cyclists using Dryden Road is impressive, but questionable, as DCC have used half the post modal statistics, which includes cycling figures in the seven months, yet the pre-modal were all in the autumn. It's certainly not like statistics, but as we've used statistics, I can tell you that there's one in return. There was actually a decrease of 32% in the latest 12 hour cyclist pre-modal comparison. In our opinion, the report is totally biased in favour of E9 cyclists and not the local residents or pedestrians. This is almost a carbon copy of how things went wrong the last time.
I ask you to sum up, give you 30, below 30 seconds to sum up, if you could, please.
Thank you. From all the information gathered via Freedom of Information responses, the lack of pedestrian censuses, traffic censuses have not been undertaken in the last three months, censuses not undertaken at key points, the very poor consultation process, the flawed public consultation report that the 2022 Hattock members received and were misled with the wrong vote numbers and colour coding, missing statistical data, increased data is now experienced by pedestrians on Bovymores to Holdenview Terrace, the ambulance delays, the unintended consequences for local residents, thousands have voted for Dryden Road being reopened. My answer to this is actually quite simple. I believe councillors, you should consider the decision for closing Dryden Road for vehicle through traffic made by on the 17th of January 2022 Hattock Committee, unsafe and flawed, and then issue a revocation order under the Highways Act in 1980 and direct that Dryden Road is immediately reopened for vehicle through traffic in both directions. Thank you, Chair. Thank you all.
And thank you for your presentation, Terry. Are there any other members attending who wish to present a petition? It is possible understanding order for literally to walk in the door with a petition. Just checking. Nope. But we'll now move on to speakers from local authority, from public speakers. So I'll first of all call former councillor Rachel Sutton of Exeter City Council. I'm doing in the order of the list I've got here, Rachel. And after that will be Sue Westall, then Alderman Prowse, Neil Martin, Gina Wells and Anna Gillard Hughes to complete the list. You have three minutes.
I'm trying to give you three minutes. Can I just stress that I'm speaking as a local resident and I welcome the recommendation that you have in your report. I'm a local resident and I use the route regularly, both as a pedestrian visiting I'm a local resident and I use the route regularly, both as a pedestrian visiting hospice care and as a local running group leader. Dryden Road is a much more pleasant place to be since the decision to make it part of the wider cross-city safe cycling and walking route. I feel as safe walking here as I do in any part of Hevetree and Wanford during the day and at night. But it's not just me that feels this way. I'm including here the views of a parent of a child attending Windstream School and two residents of Dryden Road. Sadly, the parent feels that if they spoke here themselves, their child would be bullied at school. How sad is that? As a parent of a child at Windstream Primary on Burnhouse Lane, I was staggered to hear some of the opponents of the local safe routes claim the only middle class, that only middle class families benefit and that working class parents have to drive. Windstream is as working class as any school in Exeter. I'm on the school run every day, I see how many kids use the new routes on Dryden Road, Rifford Road and the widened pavements at the bottom of Burnhouse Lane to get to school. I asked the school to do a quick hands-up survey and here are the results. Years one to six at Windstream, 132 of them walked to school. Bike, scooters and wheeling, 41. Car, 64. Bus, four. Busy parents need to drive, fair enough, but the kids who have to cycle or walk to school deserve safe routes. Nearly all of the transport space in Exeter is given to cars. If we want our children to grow up to be independent, active and healthy, this has to change. That starts with keeping the routes we have, not taking them away. Removing the Dryden Road filter would put thousands of extra cars every day directly through the routes these kids take to school. It will make their journey to and from school less safe. And secondly, we live on Dryden Road and it has been a much more pleasant experience living here since the cycle route and traffic limitations were implemented. The reduction of traffic and pollution in Dryden Lane has been noticeable. We are increasingly concerned about pollution and noise levels. And in particular, as someone who has suffered heart problems, it's encouraging that these schemes have been implemented. It makes sense to us to provide a safe route for pedestrians and cyclists, there are plenty of routes for cars. It's also much quieter in the area with many residential properties, an area which had unfortunately been blighted over the years by increasing traffic levels, particularly during the wrap run period each day. And it's not as if Dryden is completely traffic free, it's still busy at the lower end towards Lidl. We think that other local roads are quieter too, since these traffic calming measures. And it would be a real retrograde step to roll back measures that encourage walking and cycling in the city. We don't see why there shouldn't be at least one safer, less congested and polluted route into town. If Dryden Road is fully reopened, what is the proposal to replace the current safer route for cyclists and walkers? We don't see any roads in the area having the same level of congestion that Dryden Road used to have with the traffic often backed up all the way from the bottom of the road to Wanford House. It also caused backlogs on Bovemores Lane, all the time the car engines were idling away as they inched down the road. We applaud the council for encouraging a healthier, more environmentally formed travel. If not now, when would schemes to promote active travel occur? Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes, 38 seconds. Just let it go.
Thank you, Chair and members. Dryden Road was first closed as an emergency measure during Covid. After a flawed and very limited consultation, it was made permanent. This closure was voted on by a previous Hattock group, many of whom were seduced and influenced by interest groups at the expense of the many who they were then elected to represent. Every single one of the councillors who voted for the closure has now lost their seat and no longer part of Hattock. Little did they know the hidden consequences they would be inflicting on nearby communities and those working and visiting our numerous hospital sites. This includes the residents of adjacent streets like Bovemores Lane, Church Terrace, Wanford Street, Meadowway, Kingsway and even on to the Burnhouse Lane estate, all of whom have seen displaced traffic flooding their residential streets. It includes children and the elderly having to manoeuvre around vehicles which have mounted pavements at congested pinch points. It includes delays to ambulances trying to access the emergency department, something the CEO raised but was ignored. It includes health workers and visitors who now have to cross roads which have seen a huge increase in traffic. It affects many residents and health workers who feel nervous walking on an isolated, almost silent road after dark. It includes those using buses who suffer daily delays as a result of clogged routes. I am a taxi driver and yes, it affects my customers who now have to endure longer journeys and increased expense because of this closure. And for what? Dryden Road is a category six main through road, made of a heavy asphalt designed for significant use, nearly seven metres wide, double yellow lines so no obstruction, traffic light safe access onto Barrett Road and has an existing cycle path. Yet it is shut to benefit around 19 cyclists an hour. Yes, you heard right, 19. How does this make sense? We have said from the outset, a solution, a middle ground proposition needs to be found, something for all, not the few. But it has to be proportionate and geared towards the facts and the data of current and trending use. A single segregated cycle lane or even a shared path of three metres, similar to many all over Exeter, would be an efficient use of our money. Or even vertical wand road separators on the existing cycle lane, which would cost in total around £6,000. Now that would be an efficient use of our money. Today councillors, you have the chance to put right so many wrongs, an opportunity that will benefit thousands of residents, hospital workers, visitors, commuters and schoolchildren. By listening to the evidence, the facts, the data and applying logic, you can find a solution for all and begin to restore faith in our political processes. A yes for democracy and it's a real win-win. What councillor would not want that?
Thank you, Sue, that was three minutes, 18 seconds. I now call upon Alderman Percy Prowse.
I haven't spoken yet. Thank you, Chair, and committee members. I'm in my 13th week of vertigo. Take that off my time please, but so I'm suffering. I've been a member of this committee since 2007 and I retired in May this year. Myself and Honorary Alderman, she's been on the committee even longer, is also going to speak. We've come to learn what it means to introduce a traffic order or a road closure. And we expect and want to hear from the office in particular, what officially happens. So a little bit disappointed when it don't quite happen, but there was an excuse. I've lived in this area for 40 years, I use the Dryden Road Lane as a cyclist six to 10 times a week. Before that, I'm in a car and now I travel through Burnhouse Lane. So, the first I knew about this introduction was during the Covid regulations, when suddenly there's yellow signs in the pavement saying social distancing and I can't remember the rest of the words. So that's the first I knew about it. And then the next I knew about it was the 13th of October, we had a meeting here. And on the agenda was this subject. And believe it or not, there's only one paragraph. So I look forward to the next meeting on this subject. And it was the 19th of July 2021. I am 13. Bizarrely, it was a verbal update. I have no idea what was said. And even if I was to ask what it said in the minutes, knowing Gerry, it just said the members discussed the subject. So I'm relying on the report of 17th of January 2022. There was lots in the report about it. I read it carefully. And of course, I didn't vote for it, but it was voted to retain it as a road closure. Early in the year, I decided to do my own census, but in my head. I did 250 journeys and over that, not the same day. And I thought I'd count how many cyclists. In 250 journeys, I only ever passed 19 cyclists, sorry, not 19, 35 between the closed part. And I thought, this is strange, because the payments are so wide, Dryden Road is so wide. And if you look carefully, you can still see the cycle path on the up bit only. Look, don't check Google Earth, it looks flat. If you go there, it's one hell of a steep hill. And then I thought, why are so many cyclists going through Well Oak Park? That's just before the road closure. I remember being on plan in the city council, we opened a gap in the edge into Shakespeare, controversial it was, and I've stopped people and said, why are you coming this way? And they said, do you know how steep that hill is? We work in the hospital, it's quicker to come up that way. Right. There is a lot to say, but because nobody else has said it yet, this is what I wanted to say. Study as hard as I may, I can't find any reference to what would happen if you shut that road in relation to congestion in another road. We're talking Bovemores. You remove four spaces, opening would be good. I drove up and down there Tuesday this week to pick up Omen Owen. And both buses, both directions, came the same time and they got aired up. There's nowhere to pass. And I'm thinking, no assessment was done. I finish on this. This council has been here before. When we reversed the one-way system in Totnes in 2016. We were took to court, the High Court, then the Court of Appeal by a member of the public who decided to challenge us on the introduction of an order. And the one thing in both courts was this, apart from spending an awful lot of money fighting a losing battle, that's the council. It said we failed to assess the implications of Sex 1 to 2-2. That means if you're going to shut a road, you must do an assessment where you think it's going to go and what effect it would have, congestion, pollution. I've got the transcripts of the court case, I'm not reading it out. So there is a very good excuse for the council to re-look at this and think, this road is so wide, so are the payments, we can do a better scheme. Thank you. How did I do? How much?
Four minutes, four minutes, 27.
No, you can only talk for one minute, right.
But as an Alderman, I was going to allow you five minutes anyway. Can I call on Neil Martin now, please? Back to the three minutes now, Neil, if possible, please.
What, sorry?
Yeah, back to three minutes now, Alderman are allowed five minutes.
That doesn't count, does it? Thank you, Chair. The 4,000 signatures are not against the E9 route or safer cycling, they're about fairness. They're about such a wide, seven metre, well-used road has not been designed to benefit everyone. That's cyclists, drivers, hospital visitors and residents alike. Policies matter, but legally and morally, residents must come first. Under the Localism Act, councils can act, but the power carries a duty to consult and respond meaningfully to residents' concern. This duty isn't fulfilled by simply ticking the box. It's an ongoing legal and moral obligation as set out in Percy's Road Traffic Act and the Equality Act. For years, I've worked closely with local and national disability groups. We are concerned there is no legally sufficient equality impact assessment has ever been carried out for the Dryden Road closure. The only document found under FOIs was an impact assessment written before Covid-19's pop-up schemes, labelled version 2017. This may well have been the year it was written. It's not been discussed at any Hattock meeting since. This raises questions about the legality of the closure decision. Back and turn to the report's recommendations. Part B says, agree a further public consultation. With respect, that process needs to improve first. We've seen previous consultations involving blockbusters. A Hattock member using Donald Duck, the RNIB ignored, and repeated consultations that simply do new how. I've never offered to keep the same option. So why would we want another six-week consultation or why would it be more successful? Once analysed and reported, it'll be well into 2026. This report admits that none of the eight key stakeholders actually supported the current scheme. Four are against it, the rest remain neutral. That speaks volumes. Deeper issues lie in hand, these consultations are designed. No diversity of thought, no local insight, just seven men in a WSP room deciding on what's going to go forward as options. That's from there. This report fails to acknowledge the new wrap run through the hospital grounds. The data in this report fails to identify the increased amount of vehicle traffic which is now cutting through from Barrett Road to Bobby's and Church Lane, affecting vulnerable patients and everyone working there in our large regional hospital. These movements aren't recorded in the data, so the findings are incomplete. Traffic hasn't vanished, it's simply been displaced. So rather than solving a problem, it's created a more dangerous one. The amended highway code now places pedestrians and vulnerable users at the top of the hierarchy. So this must be used to guide a new equality impact statement. Reopening Dryden Road with sensible safety interventions could create a safe hospital environment and a safe road for all. And finally, Chair, I recognise that none of the elected members here today were involved in the original decision. That gives you an opportunity to leave past mistakes behind and to start afresh. So look at Dryden Road with fresh, independent eyes. It's wide enough for two-way traffic, pedestrians and active travel. Let's apply common sense, let's have a road for everyone. I thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes, 38. Can I call on Gina now too? Jenny, pay the pardon, Gina Wells.
Thank you, Chair. You've all been sent a copy of this report and I sincerely hope that you've read it. I'm not going to rehearse the information in it. I want to talk about the communities who've been affected by the permanent closure of Dryden Road to vehicles since 2022. The residential communities whose everyday lives are impacted, whose health and wellbeing have suffered, and the community of commuters who travel to and from the city each day to work. And I want to talk about trust. Trust that people making decisions on behalf of these communities will consult and consider before enacting changes. Our trust in our public servants was badly damaged by the introduction of the LTN in Hevetree and Whitton. It has not fully recovered and continuing this closure will do nothing to repair it. The section of the report detailing the legality of the consultations carried out suggests that they did not meet all the necessary requirements and that they have fallen short of upholding the rights of residents under the Equality Act 2010. How can we trust our elected officials if they do not follow the necessary procedures? I understand the need for us all to live greener lives and I appreciate that both councils have an obligation to work towards a lower carbon future. I applaud the desire to see more people actively involved in cycling or walking. But Exeter is a city built on medieval foundations with roads not designed for the volume of traffic they now carry and with little room to expand. So to block a wide thoroughfare only puts pressure on the surrounding residential roads. The city is built on hills. The fit and healthy can walk and cycle up these hills, not so the elderly or infirm. It is not a convenient city. So finding solutions to traffic issues is difficult. But imposing a change does not solve the problem, it only seeds dissent. Continuing the Dryden Road closure simply does not make sense. Traffic has already been reduced in the area. There is a bus gate in Wanford Road, Magdalen Road is one way and London Lane is restricted. These changes, that our communities have reluctantly worked around. But to close a through road, there are large teaching hospitals, certainly divided and at times endangered communities. We will not be persuaded out of our cars until there is a viable alternative. And if you are unable to cycle or walk, there is none. We need an efficient, regular bus service. Busy people are time by more and we can't afford taxis which have to take longer routes. We need our two councils to work together to ensure that no one community is. We need our two councils to work together to ensure that no one community is disadvantaged. Communities thrive where those working for them understand their issues and listen to the people when they voice their concerns. Imposing change without our goodwill does not unite its divide. We are ready to work with you if you will listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And could we have Anna next?
Thank you, Chair. I moved from Hevetree to Malmston Street four and a half years ago and had been made aware of the temporary closure of Dryden Road under the guise of COVID by my solicitor. In 2021, the council decided to consult local residents whether to make it a permanent closure. There was never an option on the form I received to reopen road fully, which I thought was unfair and I remember writing to complain about it, but never had a reply or response. I worked at the time as a senior ward sister at the Exeter Nuffield Hospital and knew quite a lot of our staff and also staff in RDNE would also walk or cycle to work via Dryden Road. The it's not only just the RDNE or Exeter Nuffield, that road includes Wanford House, the hospice, Force Cancer Centre and also people working in the barracks. Since it got permanently closed, it is deemed to be too quiet and unsafe with no through traffic, making pedestrians and cyclists, especially early morning and evening, feel very vulnerable. May I remind you that hospital staff start at early, have an early start and they actually can finish very late into the evening. We don't usually conform to like office hours. Your own statistics bear out the active travel scheme hasn't significantly risen since the road closure. The hospital and Bovymores Lane have been severely impacted with more people using this as a cut-through by cars, pedestrians and cyclists. Under the Freedom of Information request, it transpires that a lot of people living in the surrounding area to Bovymores Lane were not even consulted about the closure of Dryden Road and would not have realised the impact it would have. Blue light services have been impacted due to the displacement of traffic and their timely arrival to A and E. Since permanent closure, we as residents of Wyvern Park have noticed an increase in antisocial behaviour. Younger children being mentally and physically abused in the play areas. Um, we've had people banging on our doors all times of day and night. And recently, we've had a real spate of parcels being stolen off doorsteps. This has all been reported via our neighbourhood watch and our local police officer is aware. There are many periods throughout the 24-hour day that are extremely quiet and I feel this is detrimental to our local community on safety and playing into the hands of the perpetrators. As a council, you should be adhering to the four principles of co-production. Equality, recognising everybody's opinions. Diversity, embracing inclusivity. Accessibility, ensuring equal participation. And reciprocity, mutual benefits and responsibilities. I believe in this instance, the council have fallen short. Please consider reopening Dryden Road as a matter of urgency. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I call upon councillor Brazil if he's still got time to speak now?
So the leader of the council asked me. I've got to always, that's very kind of you. Thank you very much. Um, thank you to everyone that's come here and made your representations. I mean, it's very important to us to hear. Really, what I wanted to say was, um, I mean, I don't know what the decision is going to be of the Hattock here and obviously the Hattock, uh, it's their decision. But if you do go out to consultation again, can we make sure that there is a child's voice in that consultation? Um, so the schools, the children have a voice. I had a question at full council, um, just the other day on the 4th of September, when the, when a lady said that there'd been, uh, that there'd been a lack of consultation with young people and children um, about decisions that affect them as well. So, you know, that's all I would ask of this committee, but, um, best of luck. It's not easy. Um, but thank, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brazil. Sorry, councillor Lucy Haig of Exeter City Council to present.
Uh, Chair, can I speak after the report's been presented?
I will take advice.
Okay.
However, I have that discretion, I will allow it, councillor Haig.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Holland, do you wish to speak now or after the officer's report?
Uh, thank you.
Point of order, Chair. I, if it's, if we're going to start now having members of the public and councillors speak to us after the report, which is in your gift, will we then be able to revisit what we have discussed? Because they may bring something to the table that we never thought about and might have changed our minds. I thought the whole object here is to listen to the public, to try to influence us, to give us their opinions before we debate and vote. So if we do, I would like to be able to come in again after councillor Haig has spoken because she may say something which I may say, oh, I never thought of that, I need to change my mind.
As a member of the committee, you are not able to question presenters at this stage. And all I am saying, seeing is that councillor Haig will speak after the officer's done her presentation in the same way that councillor Holland is speaking now. I would not see members of the committee cross-examining councillor Haig. At that time, she will make her statement, three, three, three minutes and then sit down again.
Point of order, Chair. Have you finished with the local?
Councillor, uh, Alderman, uh, you are no longer a member sadly of this authority. Therefore, you cannot raise from the public points of order. You might be very angry and upset by what we're doing. I have worked through the list of names that have presented themselves to speak at this meeting and everyone has spoken who has.
To Wendy's office.
We'll just clarify, I'll just clarify whether you have been in touch with. I would just clarify, sorry, I will clarify that point and if that is so, I will call you to speak. I would not deny you the right to speak at any occasion, so please have your three. Alderman Fogarty, if you take your three minutes worth, please, we'll have you now.
Three minutes?
Yes.
I thought. Alderman? Being one of you.
I was hoping for three, but I'll allow you up to five.
I'll do it as quick as I can. Uh, Chair councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the reopening of Dryden Road to all traffic. Some of you may know me as Alderman Fogarty or even past Alderman of Exeter or serving county city councillor for a total of 24 years. As a county councillor, my strength was a health promotion with walking, cycling heavily involved creating our wonderful valley parks. And sure, Jamie will back me up, especially the work I did with cycling and walking. In fact, more than anyone else I know. I was active with the accessory along to Exwick, linking up the Green Circle into Wanford up through Coronation Road to Dryden Road and Barrett Road. Went on Exeter City Council, working with Devon County Council. I ran a campaign to open up Magnolia Avenue cycle and walkway with the disgust of the then county councillor. This gave the people access to all local facilities, a, a safe walk and cycle lane to school. Uh, working with on Exeter bypass cycle lane with Officer Richard Ofield through to the Met Office and Pinnell Road cycle lane. Also Cumberland went away with the widow and his born, newborn baby. Councillor Saxon Spence had great pleasure of opening the cycle lane that was called after the late and great engineer of Devon County Councillor, Officer Cumberland. Some of you may recall my 40 years as a proud NHS worker or even 61 years as a labour activist pounding the streets to find a voice for people that won't speak up. But today I address you as a widow, a mother, a grandmother, a great-grandmother and a proud resident of over 81 years of our community, my community. Everyone of those 81 years living within a mile of Dryden Road. I care because it's my home, my community. I care because it's not just me, it's my family and all of us who are breathing in more pollution as a result of this decision. I care because it's my former colleagues at the hospital who struggled across congested road or are frightened to walk home after a shift down deserted, dimly lit Dryden Road. I care because I see ambulance stuck behind traffic on the way to an emergency department and know that one day, me, a family member, friend or neighbour will be stuck in this traffic, in this emergency. How do I know the consultation was poor? I know because I lived there and me and none of my neighbours had a letter, yet many living further down Dryden Road and were not affected did. How do I know congestion is bad? Because I have been stuck in this traffic, because I have stood with my community doing many vehicle audits on Bovymores Lane and Wanford Street. I see this increase every day. How do I know this affects hospital workers negatively? Because they are my family, my friends, my neighbours. They often tell me how their colleagues have been late for work or leaving work because they are stuck in this traffic and seeing for themselves. The local community is screaming for a change, nearly 4,000 known petitions, both paper and online. The local taxis and bus companies are screaming for change. Key stakeholders, the hospital, fire surf, the barracks, all want change. What is the answer councillor? I have walks in your shoes. Change is possible. Listen to the people. Don't just be a rubber stamp. The campaign and petitions have said all along, there is room for all. Look at my track record. You are supposed to promote a better life, not make people's lives worse. It is in your gift to open Dryden Road. I have in the past been a great advocate for cyclists, walkers. Children in Well Oak can use the footpath that, that I campaigned for, that all other councillors were against many decades ago. This footpath narrows children at Well Oak, a safer walk to Windstream and Isco School and workers at local hospitals and burnt out things and easy access to the place of work. And there must be a choice and a solution is needed to benefit all. Dryden Road has room for all modes to travel safely, but a solution must be proportionate. It must be for the many, not the few. Councillors, make that change. Reopen Dryden Road. Make it happen today. I must say, I warmed I was today to hear that Whitton Barton will be involved with active travels at school. I've worked in the past through cycling, gardening and composting with Whitton Barton. And I'd like to say a big thank you for working with this school.
Thank you. And finally, councillor Holland, do you wish to speak now or after the officer's report? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Today is a moment in time when Exeter Hattock will leave a lasting impact on the community of Wanford and in fact, across the city of Exeter and beyond. As a resident and district councillor, I am on the side of all road users, the residents. And residents continue to listen and I continue to listen to the concerns around the closure of Dryden Road to through traffic. My overarching responsibility is for the safety and wellbeing of the travelling public, be they pedestrians, cyclists or motorists. I am acutely aware of the need to tackle congestion. We need to make our air cleaner to ensure that no residents are potentially exposed to high levels of pollution. I have previously been a member of Exeter Hattock and recognised that Devon County Council have majored on promoting active travel schemes as a way of changing the behaviours of the travelling public. The schemes were received well by a few, but I fear that by closing Dryden Road, Devon County Council have at a stroke alienated a section of the wider community. During my time as a city representative, I came to recognise that the power to deploy active travel schemes lay with officers and one divisional member. This, in my view, is totally undemocratic. The issue of Dryden Road is like a bubble under wallpaper. A problem may be addressed in one area, but it manifests itself in another. Roads outside of Dryden Road closure are seeing an increase in traffic volumes to such an extent that it is having a detrimental effect on the quality of lives of those who live in them. Poor air quality is being experienced by those whose roads now become the new alternative routes. The closure of Dryden Road has destroyed the peace and quiet for residents of Bovymores Lane and Wanford Street who now experience large volumes of traffic and have to imbibe excessive levels of nitrogen oxygen. The cab trade is but one sector which uses our roads. I class them as an essential service. Much of their bread and butter activity during the day is to carry vulnerable people to and from. Doctor surgeries, the RDNE, the chiropractor, the osteopath, the physiotherapist, the dentist and the chiropractor, to name a few. Devon County Council itself uses the cab trade to commute students with high educational needs to and from specialist units. None of these people can hop on a bike or walk. Public transport is patchy, to say the least, and not hugely reliable. I have attended all of the taxi forums since 2014 and most recently have chaired that forum. Top of every agenda was the flawed and failed low-traffic neighbourhood in St Lloyds, Hevetree and Whitton. And I feel well placed to give a view and understand the challenges facing the cab trade in the city. There are approximately 500 cabs, 400 private hire, 100 hackneys. Most of these vehicles are still fossil-fuelled. If just 10% of the cabs needed to navigate the hinterland of Dryden Road by just four miles on a return journey, that creates 73,000 miles a year. Government figures, depending on the type of fuel, size of engine, indicate that every 1,040 miles generates 83.3 of carbon emissions. And so, as a way forward, may I ask that the recommendation before you is declined and that an emergency traffic order is created to remove the closure as soon as possible? Further, that instead of conducting a new lengthy and costly consultation, that officer's a task with drawing up plans to create a segregated cycle lane and pedestrian footpath, which will achieve exactly what most, if not all, in this chamber today would likely support, which is to protect the E nine cycle route, pedestrians and reinstate two-way traffic. I will finish as I started. Today is a moment in time when Exeter Hattock will leave a lasting impact on our community. I urge the elected members of Hattock to embrace the proposal that I have made and use your discretion to relieve the misery now facing so many. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Holland. Could I please place on record my thanks and those of the committee to everybody who's participated and for all the information they've passed to us and including past councillors and present councillors for their contributions. We'll now move on to item eight formally, which is what all the public participation has been about to date and thank you for it. It's a review of the Dryden Road scheme, impact of diverted traffic relating to this issue being raised at our previous meeting and a resolution for a report to this meeting for consideration. I will call upon the officer to do a presentation, which you will be able to see on the screen as well. It's a PowerPoint presentation which supports and I should point out produces no evidence that is not in the published report. It is material taken from the published report. So I call upon the officer to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there we go. I think, yeah, it's presenting now. Okay. So thank you very much. I'm going to keep the presentation very short. Um, it's going to highlight only the key points that we made in the report, um, which I'm sure all of you have read. And we can answer questions about the report after the presentation. So, um, just a reminder of what we were asked to look at, uh, at the Hattock Committee. On the 15th of July, we were asked to undertake. We were asked to undertake a review on the impact of diverted traffic in a surrounding area of Dryden Road and that we would present a report to that effect at this next meeting, which is today. So we have focused our analysis on the following points. We've conducted traffic flow and junction assessments, junction capacity assessments. We've reviewed cycle flow data, personal injury collision analysis and we've obtained public services stakeholder feedback. We've also carried out an Active Travel England Route Check Tool. And for those of you who may not be familiar, the Active Travel England Route Check Tool is a design assessment tool used to evaluate the safety, accessibility and quality of walking, cycling, wheeling and routes and cycling routes against national standards. You probably know that Active Travel England is a government agency set up by the Department for Transport to improve walking, wheeling and cycling. And they are one of our key funding bodies to fund the active travelling infrastructure. So the results of all of these surveys are presented in the report and in the appendixes. And given the mixed stakeholder feedback that we have received to date and the data review that we've undertaken, having also taken into account some of the correspondence that we've received so far, we would recommend that further consultation is undertaken so that we can listen to all the views from everybody and look at the following three options: to either retain the current scheme, to remove the current scheme, or to deliver an alternative scheme. It will likely undertake, the alternative scheme will likely undertake options that were looked at at the previous consultation, but we would also be able to consider alternative options at an early stage to see whether anything else is possible that may have come up from views already received. So in terms of alternatives considered to the recommendation in this report, I think this is important to go through. So in terms of retaining the existing scheme, this is not possible because it's, well, it's not recommended because there are sufficient concerns raised by some of the public service stakeholders and following the submission of the petitions that we received in July and today, it is important to review the situation because it is clear that further consultation is needed. The immediate removal or emergency removal of the bollards is not possible because it would need to follow statutory, a traffic regulation order process, which is a statutory requirement for councils to make such changes. An experimental traffic order has been ruled out because it's considered that reinstating the previous highway arrangement is not an experiment and also previous support, previous experience supports the need for further consultation before implementing something like this, which is why we need to follow the full process. It would not be possible to suspend the scheme using temporary traffic regulation orders because these are allowed for things like roadworks, for example. And the recommendation to revoke the traffic regulation order for the current scheme and therefore and remove the bollards, this action would only be on the basis of the petitions and the views of stakeholders. And therefore, yeah, we need to, a full comprehensive public consultation in order to support effective decision-making to that effect. So to move on to the next slide, so therefore, yeah, we asked the committee to therefore consider and comment the information in this report and to agree that a further public consultation, considering the future for Dryden Road, is held. Thank you for listening. I think there's another presentation now and then we can answer questions.
Proceed with the other presentation now. We will have councillor Hague now to speak to us. And members, we will then come back to you for any questions or clarification to the officer on the report before we move to proper debate on this issue.
Chair, I'm speaking as the elected member for Heavittree Ward, where residents have lived with the consequences of the Dryden Road closure for the last five years. Many have told me about the displaced traffic through quiet residential streets, ambulances and for space, worsening and rising fears of pedestrians. I recently walked the area with a resident who uses a motorbike after a stroke. Watching her navigate the congested junctions was sobering. Holden View Terrace.
Is it possible you're slightly closer to the microphone?
Do apologise.
It's not the paper. I think the voice is not being picked up clearly for all members to hear.
I shall whisper louder. Watching her navigate the congested junction was sobering. Holden View Terrace has no controlled crossing, unlike Dryden, and has seen a jump of nine per cent in capacity. We even saw an ambulance delayed in a queue. We should be improving traffic flow around our hospital. In 2020, consultants WSP prepared an impact assessment for COVID-19 active travel measures, E nine modal filters. To the residents, this would have been seen as an emergency temporary scheme. When members were, when members were asked at Hattock in 2022 to make the closure permanent, this document was referenced but never published with the report. It took a freedom of information request to make it public in September 2025. Three years too late. Today's report acknowledges that an impact assessment was undertaken prior to implementing the temporary closures in 2020. But relying on an earlier COVID-era assessment produced without consultation and excluding shielding and residents, the council failed to ensure that Hattock members had timely, relevant and accessible evidence when approving the road traffic order in 2022. This likely breached the public sector equality duty and the Brown principles, Brown versus a secure state for work and pensions. Eight, which requires equality considerations to be taken before and during thinking, not afterwards. This was echoed in Harris Security Council twenty-one, that an outdated and incomplete impact assessment invalidated the decision. If members never saw the assessment, it would be said that members exercised this duty and it was therefore never discharged. It claims conversion only adds six hundred and fifteen metres a minute and thirty seconds, generally times for those with disabilities. This is woefully underestimated as displaced and patient traffic converges on the toilet. Under section six point one, DCC's own strategic plan highlights supporting independence and dignity. Doesn't apply to those.
Councillor Hague, you seem to have a faulty microphone. So all the cuts that were gone.
All the way from the beginning?
Oh.
Okay. Under section six point one, Devon County Council's own strategic plan, it highlights supporting independence and dignity as largely positive. Presumably this doesn't apply to those with disabilities or ill health trying to reach the hospital safely and on time. Had Hattock members seen the impact assessment in 2022, I believe they would have questioned it immediately. The impact assessment predicted improved air quality on the non-residential part of Dryden Road. But that was achieved by displacing around seven hundred vehicles a day onto bus and residential routes, adding congestion and idling traffic where residents live. That disregard distorts the true picture. Residents did report concerns about air quality to Devon County Council, but no air quality measures were ever provided, no monitoring, no mitigation was offered. That failure breaches section one two two of the Road Traffic Regulations Act of nineteen eighty-four, which requires councils to balance the need of all road users, protect local amenities and consider air quality and accessibility.
Councillor Hague, you're fast approaching your five minutes. I'd be grateful if you could draw your remarks to a conclusion, please.
Okay. In Totnes versus Devon County Council in 2015, the High Court found that Devon County Council had failed to comply with section one two two when introducing a traffic scheme that ignored the wider impacts. The same applies here. The authority did not properly balance competing needs or consider proportionate alternatives. Residents have already signed a petition calling for Dryden Road to be opened and further consultation would only waste more public money. This is not a rejection of the E nine route, it's a call for fairness and balance. A heart of Wanford project could access Active Travel England funding to deliver exactly that, an inclusive, well-designed route that works for everyone. Finally, what the Dryden Road closure shows is that large centralised decision-making often misses the detail, the human consequences of policy. Our residents deserve decisions that are fair, evidence-based and truly reflected of their needs. It is time to put their voices first, reopen Dryden Road and restore trust to our local democracy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hague.
Chair, we have a five-minute break for people of a certain age before we get into the debate, which most probably will go on for a while.
At the stage where any members of the committee can ask questions of clarification of the officer, that is not a reason to start debating the topic. The debate will start after we have a recommendation on the table to debate. Councillor Byall.
Yes, just thank you, Chair. The clarification is really.
I've got an order for the question, so I've noted you wish to ask a question.
Oh, right, sorry.
Yes, yes. So I start with the division member. Do they have any questions?
I know my place. Thank you, Chair. I know my place.
Yes, yes. So I start with councillor Nash with any questions of clarification. I'll then come on to councillor Jack Aid, who has a parallel interest because it goes partly through his division as well. Then I'll go around the room, rather than put your hands up, I'll simply go around the room one at a time and take any questions from all members, so you don't have to keep your hands up. Thank you. Councillor Nash.
Hi, I hope that's working. So I've got two points of clarification, if that's okay. One is very, very quick. So just to confirm, in the report, it does state that no evidence to suggest that any collision correlation with or attribution to the diversion of traffic due to the modal filter on Dryden Road, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Could you just go through to the paragraph? That is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that there isn't any evidence to suggest any collision correlation.
No.
The point, the second point I've got is it relates to an email I received on the first of September. I received confirmation from the litigation team stating that traffic regulation order may be suspended through a temporary traffic regulation order. And they gave me an example of where roadworks were taking place. They went on to say the council issue such suspending orders on occasion and have done so in the past.
I'm going to pass that on to my colleague. Thank you.
Yep, to issue a temporary traffic regulation order, there are certain criteria that we can do that, which is roadworks. And obviously that does not apply in this case, which is why obviously in Liz's presentation, we clarified that a TTO temporary traffic order was not an option to immediately revoke or suspend the restriction in this scenario.
Okay, just very quickly then, just because they were saying, well, the council have issued such suspending orders outside of the roadworks and have done so in the past.
I'm not sure what that specifically refers to, but we have certainly suspended prohibitions for events, for example, that much might be what that's referring to. So things like the Tour of Britain that have come through, we need to suspend prohibition to allow traffic through, to use alternative routes and whatever. But that again, that is defined within the legislation as the reasons why we can do those restrictions.
Thank you.
Next, lead.
Yeah, four questions. Can I do one at a time and hear the answer before? Yeah, so my question's around consultation and public engagement. So several speakers and residents have emailed me saying they didn't have the option in the original consultation to reopen Dryden Road. The presentation linked in the report to regarding the original consultation did list option four as returning to two-way traffic. So can you confirm if residents were, it appears residents were given the option to go back to reopening Dryden Road? Is that the case?
In 2022, the consultation, consultation itself included option for return of two-way vehicle or traffic flow along Dryden Road.
Yeah, okay. So in paragraph four point two sort of elaborates on what the next consultation would involve. And it talks about reaching a decision that can be recommended to a future committee with options to remove, retain or an alternative scheme. So can you elaborate on what the intention is on how, say, an alternative scheme might be arrived at? Will it be co-produced with residents and stakeholders to come to a better solution together? Is it going to be more of a giving some options and then going in the majority? What's the intention with how that will work to come to that decision that you'll recommend to us?
So our intention for the next steps would be to go back to our key stakeholders who we have liaised with already over the summer and find out more about their opinions and their views on the scheme. We would look back at the consultation options that were promoted in 2022 and see what other options we could put forward for design. Yeah. Well, obviously during the consultation itself, there'll be public engagement events to talk to us about options presented or whether options could be further developed in liaison with, you know, feedback received during a consultation, because that is what consultations are for.
So just in terms of the sequence, the intention is to think of options and then consult on them or consult on them, establish what the options will be and then go back and consult again on the proposals.
Yeah, so we need to come up with a list of options, a number of options that we can consult on. Once we are consulting, we can listen to the public views and following, you know, what the public say or what the views are from the stakeholders and the members of the public, we can then further develop these options before it comes to a future Hattock or a future committee, if it's Hattock or Cabinet, depending on the the outcome.
Okay. Next question is, so yeah, in paragraph four about the planned consultation, it says a letter drop to local residents will be done, which I'm glad to read. But again, I think from what a lot of people have been saying and what residents have been emailing me, we need to cover a wider area than we did before in terms of doing those letter drops. I've had residents on church terraces, like right on the edge of Bovmore's Lane, who didn't get a letter and they're very affected on that road. In Terry's report, he had sort of highlighted the areas which were affected and there are a lot of areas that received a letter drop, sorry. And there are a lot of roads adjacent to Bovmore's Lane in my division which didn't receive a letter drop. So can you confirm that we extended the area that will receive letter drops this time?
Yeah, what we normally do is we set out a letter drop area that we feel is proportionate or appropriate for the scheme that's being consulted on. That then is usually discussed or always discussed with the local member and together we will agree on what the best area would be to consult on. So we can certainly liaise with the member.
My final question, again, drawing what councillor Brazil mentioned. How are you going to solicit the views of children and teenagers specifically to make sure their voices are heard in the consultation?
So that's a very good point. We will certainly develop a plan to consult with young people. It may be through the local schools, it may be through youth ambassadors of various organisations and we will we will develop a plan for that.
Thank you.
Councillor Byall.
Councillor Ead covered many of the points, just to clarify on the consultation process. So a number of options would be put forward, is what you've told councillor Ead. But they could be modified or modified proposals following the consultations. So in other words, we want to listen to what the public may have to say because we think we know all the answers, but funny enough, we don't. So if we hear something from them, you would be pricking it up and bringing it forward. That's really the main thing. I think that's what councillor Ead was also implying, that was my concern, because that will affect maybe if somebody was minded to amend B as the recommendation. But I'm being assured that it's already there. Thank you.
I can answer that one, yes. I think, you know, we've heard a lot of speakers today talk about co-production, work with us and we'll work with you if you listen to us. And I think, you know, clearly those came out strongly through several of the speakers today. So it's only right to absolutely take that on board. Obviously, we need to start with some options. And this is really about that, you know, listening to what's been said and going into that co-production for how do we refine it and get something that works for everybody.
Councillor Neil Stevens next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just want to, some of the statements were made by the councillors and I just want either any of you to confirm. What I picked up is key words. Would you say you actually followed procedures, consultation, local needs and impact assessments before you implemented this Dryden Road closure? That's the first question. Second question, TRO, who actually applies the rules? Is it the officers of Devon County Council who actually set the rules to whether they can or cannot change a TRO? And that would go to James on that. And the last one, public consultation. I think we've already got a presentation and what people think on both sides of the party. But we're still going back for more consultation. How much consultation do you need to make a decision? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. So in terms of following procedures, yes, all procedures have been followed in the past and will be followed going forward. The legislation, the next question is probably for James to answer and then I can take the last consultation.
Yeah, in terms of who can change the traffic order, I'm not entirely sure what the background is. Obviously, we will amend the traffic order based on the decisions made by the councillors. Obviously, the decision to advertise was made by the previous committee and the decision to implement was made by the previous committee. Equally, any decisions moving forward will again be made by the committee and the councillors involved. And we will do the necessary work associated. So I'm not sure what that is. But the decisions in terms of what traffic orders are progressed and advertised and implemented is obviously involving yourselves as the councillors and the committee.
Shall I attempt to answer? I think the question you were trying to ask about, I suspect it's about why can we sometimes use TROs and why we can't? That's actually written down in the legislation. It's not something we actually have a decision on, if that was your original question.
Yeah, I was a little bit confused what you were saying, James. So I took it away that you cannot change a TRO. You couldn't just implement it because it set rules and regulations. So the question was who sets them rules and regulations and can they be adjusted or do you set them as officers of Devon County Council?
The rules are national legislation, so it's outside of our remit.
Thank you. Sorry, the last question I was reminded. Thank you, Jack.
I think you asked about, you know, how much consultation is needed. No, I think we are in a current situation where we've got a permanent scheme in. You know, at the minute, there's a bollard in and to date, we've not actually consulted or engaged with anybody about what a future option might be. So we haven't consulted that we're going to remove it. So I think what we've discussed today, and again, it relates to what I said earlier about that co-production, is we need to listen to the mix of views, which are detailed in this report. You know, there's a willingness to look at different solutions and that's why we need this next step of consultation. Because to not do that, I don't think would be following a local democratic process.
Thank you, Jamie. Sorry about that, Steve is cutting you short there. Cat, call vice chair.
There's a lot of implications when it comes to consultation. So if you go into consultation, you want to go into it with an open mind and make sure you're doing it for the benefit of the people you're consulting, you know, so it has to be an honest process and I'm sure that will be the case. But I think I'd like to understand the implications of what a consultation will do so that the public or the public understand how it affects them. Can you give me an outline of how much it will cost to run a consultation of this nature? And I think, I mean, I'm sure it will come up in the debate later, but a lot of this whole thing seems to not have been about Dryden Lane. It seems to have been about Bovymore, sorry, Dryden Road, it seems to have been about Bovymore's Lane. And a wider consultation involving that needs to be considered as well. So can I get a sense of how much cost that will involve? The other side to it then is, of course, we're a county council trying to run a road network and do other schemes around Devon. And how will this consultation, given I presume it's going to be a lot of officer time to do a consultation, it already has been, I think. What are the implications for the rest of the city? There are other areas residents want their issues sorting out as well that haven't had any airtime at Hattock and now we're giving this a second consultation. So I want to understand what the implications will be for other areas of the city. Thanks.
Thank you for your question. I will combine the answers in one, combine the two questions in one answer. It's difficult to say how much the consultation would cost in monetary value. We need to do a calculation of that. But what I can say is that it will take a lot of resource and officer hours. Looking at previous consultations, it could take in excess of 500 officers' hours because it will require a team of people to work on that. First of all, we have to work on the options and do early stakeholder engagements. Then we have to prepare the consultation materials, which takes a lot of time. And then we need to run the, launch the consultation, then run the consultation and then the analysis. And we can expect that this consultation of this particular scheme can probably generate, will probably generate a lot of responses. And we want to make sure we, you know, look at each of the responses properly. So it will take a lot of time. And therefore, that will take resource as well and that will take resource away from other schemes that we would otherwise prioritise or progress. I think it's important to know that Dryden Road is not currently in our programme of delivery because it's a scheme that's completed and in place and it's, you know, it's not currently on our programme yet. So we would need to add this scheme to our programme and therefore shift things around. I think that probably answered the question.
For members of the public, I mean, 500 officer hours sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't necessarily give people a sense of what that means to their needs. Are we talking about three, six-month delays across the city? What are the implications of that officer time?
I think in the, in the report, we've outlined a timeline, suggested timeline. We need some time, of course, to prepare the materials and then we probably would at a push be ready if we cleared the decks now, to consult in January or February. That is also after the Christmas period because usually we don't try and, we try and avoid the December month. So we can focus on delivering that consultation, having that out in the public during January and February. We could then potentially, depending on the resource, you know, we don't want to overpromise, but review the answers and hopefully take it back to a future committee. I think the committee following that, the Hattock committee anyway, would be the 28th of April, I think.
So I'm to understand that other schemes will be put on hold till after Christmas. Is that what the implication of doing this extra consultation?
We'd have to review the programme and see which schemes would need to be postponed. Yeah, they won't be shelved, they will be postponed if need be, but we would need to review that.
I'll just add that there is some capability funding that is available for scheme development revenue funding that we could call upon to allow this work to proceed from an As Active Travel England externally funded monies that we would look to use to support that process.
Councillor Wright, would you, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I've got three, if that's okay. So first of all, could you please just confirm for us for clarification? If a compromise solution was where we came to after the consultation, so if we kept this in but did something, for instance, make it one-way traffic rather than take it out or keep it as it is, would that completely go against the E nine strategic cycle network policy? Because I've heard people sort of quoting that. Can you give me an outline of how much it will cost to run a consultation of this nature? And I think, I mean, I'm sure it will come up in the debate later, but a lot of this whole thing seems to not have been about Dryden Lane. It seems to have been about Bovymore, sorry, Dryden Road seems to have been about Bovymores Lane. And a wider consultation involved in that needs to be considered as well. So can can I get a sense of how much cost that will involve? The other side to it then is, of course, we're a county council trying to run a road network and do other schemes around Devon. And how will this consultation, given I presume it's going to be a lot of officer time to do a consultation, it already has been, I think, what are the implications for the rest of the city? There are other areas residents want their issues sorting out as well that haven't had any airtime at Hattock. And now we're giving this a second consultation. So I want to understand what the implications will be for other other areas of the city. Thanks.
Thank you for your question. I will combine the answers in one, combine the two questions in one answer. It's difficult to say how much the consultation would cost in monetary value. We need to do a calculation of that. But what I can say is that it will take a lot of resource and officer hours. Looking at previous consultations, it could take in excess of 500 officers' hours because it will require a team of people to work on that. First of all, we have to work on the options and do early stakeholder engagements. Then we have to prepare the consultation materials, which takes a lot of time. And then we need to run the consult, launch the consultation, then run the consultation and then the analysis. And we can expect that this consultation of this particular scheme can probably generate, will probably generate a lot of responses. And we want to make sure we, you know, look at each of the responses properly. So it will take a lot of time. And therefore, that will take resource as well, and that will take resource away from other schemes that we would otherwise prioritise or progress. I think it's important to know that Dryden Road is not currently in our programme of delivery because it's a scheme that's completed and in place and it's, you know, it's not currently on our on our programme yet. So we would need to add this scheme to our programme and therefore shift things around. I think that probably answered the question.
For members of the public, I mean, 500 officer hours sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't necessarily give people a sense of what that means to their their needs. Are we talking about three, six month delays across the city? How what are the implications of that officer time?
I think in the in the report, we've outlined a timeline, suggested timeline. We need some time, of course, to prepare the materials and then we probably would at a push be ready if we cleared the decks now to consult in January or February. That is also after the Christmas period because usually we don't try and we try and avoid the December month. So we can focus on delivering that consultation, having that out in the public during January and February. We could then potentially, depending on the resource, you know, we don't want to over promise, but review the answers and hopefully take it back to a future committee. I think the committee following that, the Hattock Committee anyway, would be the 28th of April, I think.
So I'm to understand that other schemes will be put on hold till after Christmas. Is that what the implication of doing this extra consultation?
We'd have to review the programme and see which schemes would need to be postponed. Yeah, they won't be shelved. They will be postponed if need be, but we would need to review that.
I'll just add that there is some capability funding that that is available for scheme development, revenue funding that we could call upon to to allow this work to to proceed from an active travel England externally funded monies that we would look to use to support that process.
Council Wright, would you, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And so I've got three, if that's okay. So first of all, could you please just confirm for us for clarification? If a compromise solution was where we came to after the consultation, so if we kept this in but did something, for instance, make it one-way traffic rather than take it out or keep it as it is, would that completely go against the E9 strategic cycle network policy? Because I've heard people sort of quoting that as saying that if we if we did anything to change it now, that would completely go against ECC and DCC policy. My, having looked into it myself, I don't think it would, but could you please confirm that? Because it has been quoted. So that's my first question. My second one is about the minutes of the 19th of July 2021 Hattock, that it was resolved that further discussion with RDNE be carried out to identify any changes to alleviate Bovymores Lane that could help mitigate their concerns. I know from looking back on everything that I think there was a removal of four resident parking spaces, but nothing nothing else. I just wondered what happened to the results of of that further discussion with RDNE. They must have had more ideas than that and they seem to have been lost. Hopefully, they will be picked up now with further consultation. But it does seem to be that that was quite a strong resolution and I can't see anything coming back from that. And then my third question is about the way the traffic flow measurements comparative data is there. So I'm hoping it can prove me wrong and I've just missed something. But it shows in 3.4 of the report, Dryden Roads vehicle traffic decreased by 4,336 daily, and then it shows 547 as the AM peak hour decrease. When you then present Bovymores Lane increase in traffic, there's no figure for the daily amount at all. It says 180 in AM peak hour only. Then there's further information on page 13 where I thought maybe there would be the daily traffic count for Bovymores Lane on that in the table, so table 1.1 on page 13. But there's still no data on the daily increase on Bovymores. It's peak hour only for both areas of Bovymores. So it's listed twice in entries four and five. Peak hour increase for both ends of Bovymores. If you add those two together, Carlisle Road and Church Street and Carlisle Road and Dryden Road, you actually get a figure of 228. So I'm wondering why that isn't the figure that was included as the AM peak hour increase in point three, sorry, in 3.4 of the report. And then also I've had to try and do some maths myself to get an estimate therefore of the daily increase using the reported increase, sorry, reported decrease in Dryden Road, just looking at the AM peak hour decreases 12.6% of the daily decrease. I've applied that same maths in a very vague way and come up with a figure of a daily increase in Bovymores Lane of 1,824. I'm happy to be corrected on my maths. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go through the answer step by step. I may need some further clarification on the last question, but hopefully I can help you with the following. So in terms of compromise, the first question that you asked was in terms of compromise, would it reduce the facilities for cyclists if we were to introduce a different system in place? The answer in short would be no, because what we would be looking at is to develop something that would still allow a safe cycling route and safe space for pedestrians as well. The options previously considered did include some of those options, but it's worth bearing in mind that they would, of course, cost more money because you would have to rearrange some of the road infrastructure. We don't know what those costs are yet. So this is about a level of service. So there are alternatives possible to allow still for people walking and cycling and traffic. Your second question was to do with further discussions with the RDNE. Discussions were held or the RDNE was engaged with at the previous with previous consultation or previous scheme. But we have liaised with the RDNE this summer and we will continue to liaise with the RDNE to find out more about their views and we will do that. The aim is to do that really early on to have a full understanding of 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 their views. Your third question is about traffic flows and comparable data. You, could you, so the first question was to do with Dryden Road that it decreased. Ah, yes, why not a daily flow? Thank you. That was the question. Sorry, I hadn't written it down in full. So for Bovymores Lane, we have not got a full day count that would compare the before data and the after data. But what we do have is we have peak flow hours. We know that on Bovymores Lane, the worst case, because we've only looked at the worst case scenario and the worst case scenario is in the morning peak. That's when the traffic is the highest. So we've looked at the the morning peak flows and we've compared those. And that's why you don't see a full daily count of the traffic on Bovymores Lane itself.
Just just to add that, because you came up with an estimation of about 1,800 as your estimation. Yeah. So so I think generally speaking, AM peak flows are about 10% of the daily flow. So that that sort of equates to that 180, 1,800 increase daily. So I think that's a reasonable assumption to be made.
And you asked a fourth question, but I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you if you could ask that question again.
Bruce Bond, Council Wright.
I'm sorry, I think that the fourth part was was part of that which Jamie has sort of answered. I was checking my maths. But I think, thank you, yes, what you've done is to sort of reiterate what is in the report and reiterate the fact that the daily count is missing. But my question really was why isn't? Why hasn't there been a daily count on Bovymores Lane of increase in traffic? Because that was exactly what we were asking for at the last committee.
We undertook counts as soon as the last Hattock Committee meeting was held and a full day count would have been difficult to achieve with the resources available. So we focused on the morning count alone.
But there was a full day count on the decrease in in Dryden Road. I'm sorry, I'm just not understanding. If we're given data to compare, we need to have it's got to be comparable. It's got to be comparable. So if we're we're comparing a lemon and an apple.
Well, we didn't have a full, you know, I think, taking into account, we don't have full day traffic counts on every road in Exeter. That's one thing. And Bovymores Lane is is not one of our major routes where we would carry out lots of counts historically. Therefore, the, you know, we didn't have a 12-hour data flow to compare before scenario with with after, but we did have a a peak hour count. But it's something that that certainly, you know, looking ahead, obviously, we can, we can look in ahead. We, yeah, there's there's more analysis to be done, isn't there?
So Council Hill, have you got any questions? No, thank you. I'll now move on to Council Westonall.
Thank you. Two questions. Am I right in thinking or that, so you, this picks up on one of Council Wright's questions. So you've said that is that alternative schemes are possible that would maintain safe cycling and walking, but you said, quotes, it's all about the level of service. Can we just unpack that a bit? Can you confirm whether it's possible to have two-way traffic segregated cycle infrastructure to LTN 20 standard and pedestrian, segregated cycling pedestrian on Dryden Road from top to bottom? Is that possible?
At this stage, no, we can't. I mean, we, the the next stage is to look at these options. I think the key thing that we want to develop is something that's, as we said, heard earlier, something that's safe and usable for for walking and cycling. And we've got to look at the constraints on that corridor and what is actually physically possible that that ideally fits with the requirements of local traffic note 120, which is ultimately what Active Travel England will be judging whatever that scheme solution might be. So so I think that's that's the short answer.
Sorry, so um, so the answer was that there is the space. So I still don't understand. Is there the space to do it 1210 standard or don't you? Because I understand that this committee has been told three times in the past that it's not possible.
I mean, the width, if you took the back of footway to the back of footway, there's plenty of room for two-way traffic and and walking and cycling provision.
A complete re-engineering.
But that's a complete re-engineering. So so this is where we've got to look at options so that we can, we can look at those options so that we can come and, you know, discuss those further through the consultation process.
Just to be clear, in practice, we're talking, were there to be changes on Dryden? We're talking a lower level of protection for cyclists and pedestrians, which is what the ATE traffic tool shows. That most changes would lead to a lower level of protection that they have now. Is that correct?
Any option that we would develop and that would be delivered would would be, would be, you know, we would undertake and we would make sure that they follow the guidance, national guidance, that they are compliant with the Active Travel England design toolkits, that they follow the relevant road safety orders. So some work would need to be undertaken to look at these options. We know that there are some options. What they will, what the preferred option is, we will find out through the public consultation.
And second quick one is really picking up on Council Ketchin's point relating to that it's very confusing that this the proposal before us relates to Dryden Road when almost all the issues in the report are about Bovymores. So yeah, I suppose that's probably for the debate though. So yeah, thanks very much. That's fine. I'll withdraw that one.
Council Wood.
Thank you, Chair. Just to clarify or confirm my my understanding of what I'm hearing is that the current scheme is permanent, it's established. So to take it out is change. We can't do it through TROs or any other process. We're looking at change and therefore a consultation is needed before we make change. So that's just confirmed that that's that's my understanding of what I've heard. And so, yeah, that's my first question. I don't know whether you want to take them all in one or.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. The other thing is from reading through the reports, further to what Council Westonall was saying, I am picking up from the report that we aren't now looking at a single solution. We are looking at the fact that we've got heavy traffic in that issue and we're looking at wider than just Dryden Road. It's not an A or a B. It's a problem and we're looking for a solution through this consultation. It's not limited to just Dryden Road. There is other options which keen to hear from stakeholders and from residents. And that that will shape the final scheme. So just to confirm that it is going wider than Dryden Road. And a comment, I think, on Council Ketchin's questions around cost. I think my understanding is that the cost does have to be justified. It's public funds, but it has the cost. It has to be proportionate to the impact. And we're hearing from lots of speakers about impact in all sorts of different directions. So just to give, if you can give your view on the potential cost versus the impact we've heard, is it proportionate to fund this sort of consultation? And the other, my final question is, we heard about member, division member involvement in shaping, say, what roads are consulted, et cetera. And I heard the singular term member, not members. And yet, Council Ead was brought in as an adjacent division which had bearing. So just checking that Council Ead will will be consulted on what roads in his division he feels would be impacted. Thank you.
I think it's probably worth a clarification on the first question that you answered. Got straight, yes. Obviously, our recommendation said, you know, has recommended consultation. Of course, if if members chose to say, actually, we're not going to consult, we're just going to recommend recommended traffic regulation order to remove it, that is an option. So and then it would go, that's my understanding. Is that right? Yeah, so so that is an option to 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 not have further consultation and engagement, but to go straight to a recommendation to change whether retain or remove. Of course, that's another option, isn't it? Retain it, remove it. But obviously, from the from the opinion that we've heard, our strong recommendation is to is to consult ahead of a future traffic regulation order to do whatever the solution might be. In terms of your other question about proportionate and whether consultation, undertaking a consultation is proportionate, it feels we don't have a choice here because there is a strong opinion locally that they 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 don't like the current arrangement. We've got people saying, actually, we need a solution that needs to be worked on. They want to rebuild that trust and consult and and work with us and we want, you know, and then and then work with work with us and we work with you or whatever way around it is. So and I think that's that's kind of what we're encouraging, you know, members to consider because I think that that is a necessary next step because clearly there's tensions from stakeholders, from the local residents, but but still a desire to deliver something that works, thinking strategically about the whole route. So that's that's why we're recommending what we have in the report. And and so, yes, we have to commit to that consultation and do it properly, you know, that, you know, and that that's that's our recommendation.
Just my final question related to division member involvement. Is it one or is it two?
Yes, it's, yes, it's two. Yeah, I think we've we've established that we cut, you know, Dryden Road and and Bovymores and and done, you know, we're working with Council Reed to to work through that as well. So that's, yeah, we're happy to take that on board.
So Tony Stevens.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's just a quick question to clarify. If it was decided that Dryden Road could be opened today by the committee, what legal hurdles have to be approached to move it forward? And how long would that take?
So in terms of obviously, if the decision was to proceed and make the recommendation that they wanted to remove the the closure on Dryden Road, there would need to be the standard traffic regulation order consultation, which is obviously a minimum 21-day consultation. And then obviously must consider the comments before making a final decision. Obviously, given the secret nature of this, I would imagine we get a lot of comments which would mean it would need to come back to this committee. In terms of time scales, I suspect, given where we are in the year, we would unliketo be able to bring that back to the January committee. And again, subject to the number of comments and the resource available within the transport planning team, whether it be spring, maybe next summer, but obviously, again, it depends how much resource we can bring back. But most likely spring, I would imagine we would aim to. But again, until we carry out a consultation, we don't know what level of response we're going to get and what resource we have available to to deal with that.
Any follow-up, Council Stevens? Any follow-up?
No, I think you've answered that question. The only question, actually, no, sorry, there is another one. You did say that if you were to do a consultation, you it would take 500 man-hours to do. So you have the staff to do that and yet you seem to say you lack resources to do some of the other things.
So the consultation would take a lot of resource to deliver and for that reason, other schemes on the programme may have to shift and move around. That was what we what we explained on that point.
Thank you. Come back to Council Nash as the division member, if she has any follow-up questions.
Yep. So just to clarify, the online consultation in 2022 only offered three choices and not the four. It was the permanent closure, the closure between Cedars and Bovymore and one-way eastbound. So there was not an option online in 2022 for reopening of the road. Also, the RDNE contacted me in August to say that they were never contacted back in relation to an update on Dryden Road. And my question is that we've got 4,000 voices on the petitions. We've got 1,800 voices from the cycling campaign. So that's a total of 5,800 voices and opinions. Why can't that be taken as a consultation? Because the residents have been going out asking these questions and the cycling campaign have been doing likewise. So we've got 5,800 voices that want to be heard today. Thank you.
I can answer your last question first. The reason why we can't do that in terms of taking on board the views heard so far is because we haven't held a proper consultation yet. This is not proper consultation because we haven't launched the consultation. So we want to make sure we do that properly by letting everybody know in the area, paying proper engagement with various stakeholders. We haven't done that yet. We were asked to review the impact of traffic, diverted traffic and what that was having on the local area, which we have done. The next natural stage would be to consult and seek those views properly. And we can, of course, we are taking on board the views already expressed. Your other question was to do with the consultation, the previous consultation. There were options, four options were looked at. If your comment relates to the fourth question on the online consultation, if option one, two and three were mentioned there as favour, there is another, an alternative option there to say, are there any other options which you would wish to consider? And please describe if you wish to, you know, consider those. So there was space, room for people to make that clear, make that voice heard. But that was the previous consultation and I think we should very much look forward to the consultation that's ahead of us. Thank you. Any other questions?
So in your report, it actually states that you're going to be building upon previous consultations. Where in fact there, I mean, going back to those three options, there's no specific text saying, please, you know, indicate if you want to open. Like you said, you had to do it free-text. I'm just very concerned perhaps that if you are building on a previous consultation that was flawed, that that will kind of come into any further consultation?
No, I think, I think, you know, we've been, we're in listening mode. And I think this is why we're here today presenting this report, saying, let's consult to come up with a preferred solution. Obviously, retain is an option, remove completely is an option. And something hopefully, you know, we've heard from discussion, we need to find a middle ground solution. There's room for all, you know, I don't want to repeat myself, but work with you if you listen to us, you know, that. We've heard all of those things today, so we'd be mad not to listen to that and actually go into this next consultation. This is a new scheme, you know, we've got a permanent scheme, we could, we could keep talking about what happened in 2022. We've got a scheme now that's permanent. There's no debating that. We are talking about a completely new scheme and that's where we need, that's why we need to consult and come up with a solution that works for everybody. And that's, and so we'll learn, you know, that, all that learning and all that listening. That's where we will shape that consultation to give you those assurances you're after.
So as the Equality Impact Assessment wasn't attached to the TRO in 2022, the closure at that point, was that legal?
Well, we didn't receive any challenge, you know, off the back of that. I mean, the the impact assessment that was produced in for the temporary solution was based on the impacts of that closure. And the scheme, what was implemented was exactly the same as that. So there is an impact assessment that related to temporary closure, which was exactly the same as what was implemented. So there was a valid impact assessment and that's our opinion. But happy to take, you know, further advice on that.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just ask one question, which I didn't intend to, as Chair, but I think I want clarity on this and I think members want clarity. It is on the option slide number five, you produced three options for us or options for the committee to consider. When we had certain clarity from one officer and the other officer, I think, slightly muddied the waters about what can be done and what can't be done. So I'd be grateful if we could go back on to slide five. And if the officer for the audiences and for members here, clarity on what powers this committee has and what options it's got available to it. That's the slide, yes.
On display.
Focus through it again, because as I said, I think what was said originally and some of the responses to the questions slightly gave grey areas. And I wasn't sure where we currently are. So I think it's helpful to go back on these. So as members will be considering options in a minute, I think they need clarity what is and possible and what isn't possible.
Okay, I'll pick that one, Chair. Obviously, these were the options that were considered and have been ruled out as detailed in the report and as summarized on screen. But just I will explain it more. Obviously, the option of retaining the existing scheme, obviously, that is an option of council. We don't make any change. We're happy to leave it be. But I think, obviously, given that the comments we've heard today, recognise we need to do something and obviously we're recognising that there needs to be further consultation on that to make sure we can hear all views, not just those that have been able to attend and present today. Obviously, the option of immediate or emergency removal, obviously using temporary traffic order or experimental traffic order, which clarified is not possible due to the legislation and the rules within that legislation that allow for those measures to be used for the purposes for temporary road closures or to implement new trials of new restrictions. The third option of revoking the current traffic order and removing the bollards and just opening the road up. Obviously, again, we need to do the traffic order consultation before we can make a decision on that. But obviously, that will take time. But equally recognising again, going back to my earlier comment and the fact that we recognise we've not had a chance to listen to all views, equally, we've talked about putting options on the table. I think it's relevant before we just revoke it. There's been a lot of discussion about people supporting the E9 cycle route and things like that. So I think we recognise there is a demand to encourage and make sure cycling can carry on on Dryden Road. So I think we're looking to put those options and develop those before we sort of take the next steps. And part of the development of those options will be a consultation.
Thank you.
I think the the reports got lots of strengths, but one of the things I think that councillor Wright's drawn out is quite what the data is saying. There's a lot of people here with strong personal stories, both sides of the debate. And we just need to make sure that decisions we come to are evidence-based and you've tried to give us some evidence. But now I'm a little less clear, having heard the debate rather more clear. There's a section of road that would be suggested the traffic has not gone up much, if at all, in 20 years. And that's the lower end of Boviemore's lane between Carlisle Isle Road and Dryden Road. That's not the experience of people, but that is what the data says. Can I just then ask about the middle section of Boviemore's lane? Because that has got a lot more data to it. But again, the data is sort of a little bit, depends which figure you pick and, you know, people, people see what they want to see, you know, so. The, it's in your table and it's item four, Boviemore's Lane between Carlisle Isle and Church Street. I think everyone sort of feels that that is a problem area. So the data is important. So it talks about 2016 and 2018 and the figures are anything from about 400 to 500 at peak hours, the vehicle count at peak hour. So discrepancy 100 either way. But then the traffic count in July this year and September this year also have quite a big discrepancy. You know, I mean, a bit shy, about 80, 8590, something like that. I'm a bit, there's been this big quote about the traffic might have gone up by 1,800 in a day. And I think that's a powerful figure. So we need to just really understand if that is exactly what we're talking about or if we're slightly getting ahead of ourselves. Because as I understand it, that is a worst-case scenario if you take the lowest traffic before and the highest traffic afterwards. To me, looking at those figures, it's a very different picture. But it looks to me about, you know, if you average things out, I would have thought that's a sort of normal thing to do. It's nothing like this 180 figure that's been been said. So just to be, can we just have an interpretation of all that data so that everyone in the audience who's maybe not so data-driven and so geeky as us, you know, us councillors, we're sort of maybe, you know, I think, oh, figures, let's get into that. But you know, if you're, if you live in the area, you want to get a proper, there's a lot of data there. So that middle section with all those different figures bandied about, is it 180 vehicles at peak hour? Or is it 19 is one of the other interpretations of it? It's a discrepancy of tenfold. I think, can we just, can the officers give clarity to the members of the public and the stakeholders here? What that data is saying, because there's six sets, six numbers. And the conclusion has been to take the worst-case scenario. And now it's become the sort of fact that people will go away with and go, no, I've heard it's up 1,800 on a day. But is it really? Is it really? Because I'm not seeing that.
Ask the officers to respond, please.
I mean, I think the thing to note, obviously, July to September, generally, when we do traffic counts, we like to do them in a neutral month if we can. And that's sort of March is generally a neutral month, September, October, because it's not affected by seasonal variations and summer holidays when people are actually, you know, taking more time off. And so I think that might explain the variation between the 515 in July and the 589. And I guess, you know, British weather as well, you know, that's a, so a September, March time would give you a typical day. I mean, in an ideal world, you'd have automatic traffic counts that you could then see exactly every day. Clearly, that's just not practical. So that would explain that discrepancy, I would suggest, on the July-September difference.
But the data we're comparing it with has a discrepancy of 20% as well. You know, it talks about 409 versus 496. There's a huge discrepancy in the data we're comparing the increase to earlier. So, you know, we're getting this very skewed sort of picture. Can you comment on the comparator data so that, you know, the geeks, the people that aren't geeks can get an understanding of what that means?
Yeah, I mean, you can see from that. I mean, the 2018 two counts are 409, 470. That's no difference at all really. So and but, you know, two years prior to that, they were significantly higher, nearer to 500. And obviously, today's count, 515, but September was nearly 600. So, yeah, yes, there's been variation. I guess it's gone, it's gone, it went down in 2018 and it's gone back up to sort of 2016 levels.
I'd just like to say that I don't think councillors or geeks, so thank you for explaining.
Draw this to a conclusion. Thank you. If we could now move into the debate section of this in order that we discuss a recommendation and then vote on it and amendments as they occur. Could I point out to members, you should, at each stage, you should only be asking to speak once. There's no two or three bites of the cherry on each. So if you're speaking to the recommendation, but if an amendment is then moved, you can then speak again on the amendment. That is the priority. I prefer to start the debate with a recommendation that we're discussing rather than an open-ended debate on a report. We've already had the report. You've already questioned the officers quite effectively, I might say, on the contents of the report. As the Chair, I will move the recommendation in the officer's report and seek a seconder. Then we will start to debate. Again, the normal practice is to call upon the division member to speak first, then the neighbouring one in this case, because of the course of councillor Ead on that, and then other members participate. At any stage, any member can propose an amendment to the recommendation that's on the report. If it's duly proposed and seconded, a debate then starts on that amendment, providing there's a proposer and seconder for that amendment. And people who have already spoken may speak again on that amendment. A vote is then taken on that amendment and it either falls or becomes the substantive motion that moves forward. If at any stage, because many of us are new members, or maybe we're new members to local authorities, if at any stage you're unclear on the process or what you're voting, please ask. And I'll take you through the stages again because I don't want anybody in here or outside to be confused what they're voting or what they're deciding upon when their hands are going up. There is no process in committees for a roll call vote. In other words, nobody can stand up and say, I want to know how everybody voted on that particular issue. Clearly, it's being live streamed, so people can follow it. But if any member wishes to have recorded how they vote on any vote, they just ask and that will be recorded in the minutes. So you might be the only person who wishes to acknowledge how you voted, but you've got that request and you can make that request and it will be duly noted and that will be recorded. So I would like to move from the chair, the officer's recommendation that the committee be asked to consider and comment on this report and to agree that a further public consultation considering the future of the Dryden Road be held. Is there a seconder? No, so that recommendation falls.
Could I propose a I'm not sure if I'm in the right place. I'm terribly sorry, Chair. As you've just said, I'm not new to the committee, but I'm still quite confused.
The position is, I have moved from the chair, the recommendation, there is no seconder. So therefore, at this moment, we have no recommendation to discuss. So therefore, I need a member to propose a recommendation, not an amendment and a recommendation.
Okay, could I propose a
So councillor Wright was first. Now, that gives you no priority on preferences, on amendments or motions. You get, when you talk, it's the priority you get, not deciding issues. A councillor Wright.
So Chair, I'm proposing a recommendation, not an amendment to a recommendation.
There is no recommendation. The recommendation is not seconded, so there's no debate on it.
Okay, so could I recommend them, please? As a recommendation that the committee, that we consider and comment on the report and we agree that a further public consultation considering the future of Dryden Road and Boviemore's Lane and immediate surrounding area be held.
Is there a seconder for that? Yes, councillor Wright. So councillor Wright proposes, councillor Wood seconds. All right. So that is duly proposed and duly seconded. So clearly, we have a similar to what the previous recommended, but it has broadened the geographical scope of the consultation. That is essentially what is that, right? I call upon councillor Wright to speak to her recommendation.
I wasn't expecting that either. Thank you. And for anybody that thinks, my goodness, how unearthly decisions get made. We are, there is a process. This is democratic, Chair. Sorry, I should be addressing you. And we're all just doing our best here all the time to be democratic and really trying to take into account that's everybody's views. So my recommendation here is because of what we've been hearing is very much this sort of review started because of a petition about the impact on Boviemore's Lane. And we've heard a lot from people about that today. So I really believe it has to be part of what we are recommending now is that consultation actually mentions Boviemore's Lane. And that way, the scope of it can really make sure that looking at the effect on Boviemore's Lane of either reopening or keeping it closed or coming up with a middle ground solution will enable people from Boviemore's Lane and surrounding area as well as Dryden Road to have a really good, meaningful, impactful impact and feeding into that whole thing, that process of coming up with something that will work for everybody. Thank you.
To speak at this time, we'll reserve your right to speak.
Can I reserve my right to speak?
Perfectly. Councillor Weston Hall.
Yeah, so I think, I think what I'm doing is proposing, and I don't know what the right word is, some additional wording to what councillor Wright has said. Can I do that?
We have a recommendation at the moment. You're proposing an amendment or change of wording to that recommendation.
Yes.
Providing that your wording does not negate the meaning of the, I'm in a position to accept it. So please give us your alternative wording.
Thank you. So this is sort of just pinning it down a little bit more. And it would read that there is a consultation on solutions that will address local traffic concerns. Then it's as in the report, that will seek to address local traffic concerns while still offering safe, attractive routes for people walking and cycling on Dryden Road and Boviemore's Lane. So it's the same spirit, but it ties down the wording that's in the report.
One minute, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you got that wording? Yeah. Now, have you got that in writing in front of you?
Yeah, I can write it out.
If you would, please. That'd be helpful as well. Could I now approach councillor Wright? Could I now approach councillor Wright as the proposer of the recommendation, whether she is willing to accept that rewording? If she is, it is then accepted. If she is not, we then go to a vote on whether we include that wording or not.
Yes, Chair, I would accept that rewording amendment.
You're happy, happy to accept that?
Yes.
All right. Can we first of all check that there's a seconder for councillor Westonhall's rewording of this amendment? Yes.
Yes, Chair.
Ually proposed amendment to the wording of the recommendation proposed by councillor Westonhall, seconded by the vice chair and accepted by the mover of the recommendation. So there's no need for the committee to formally vote on it because it's been accepted by the mover. And we now move forward to a debate on the amended recommendation. So we've got the wording. We will read it out to you again to make sure there is clarity. But I think people understand the thrust of it. So councillor Nash would like to speak?
Obviously new to this. So if there is a further recommendation, is that discussed after the debate on this?
We, we, we have a recommendation which has been amended with the proposer accepting the amendment. We now have the wording coming to us, was spoken to. That now becomes the nature of the debate going forward. Any other member is free to put any further amendment, which may or may not be accepted by the original proposer. If it's not accepted, it's then debated and voted upon, and it then becomes the new substance of recommendation or it is lost and we go back to the original debate. So it is still possible for any member or members at any stage to alter the recommendation by amendment. You, you, you can propose an amendment to the wording of the existing one, right? For example, just to quote an example, you might be perfectly happy with A, that we consider and comment the report. You might not be happy, so happy with the second part. So your amendment might be to remove part B and replace with blah, blah, blah. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to get this presented and put on the screen so you can all see the wording.
Chair, sorry, just for my knowledge, because I'm new at this. So if I don't agree with the motion, we still have to go with the motion, but I can make recommendations.
You can, you can change the recommendations and we either vote for what you're suggesting or vote down what you're suggesting. If you're voted down, it reverts to the previous wording. If you win, your amendment then becomes the new motion and that is debated. But that also can be further amended by other members.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. No, that sounds cumbersome, but that's, that's the way local government works.
Just to say, Chair, I've got friends coming around on Saturday.
Welcome to come here. It's a warm hub.
So are we debating now?
The wording now appears on the screen. Consult on solutions that will address local traffic concerns while still offering safe, attractive routes for people walking and cycling on Dryden Road and Bovemore Lane. Right? Can I just ask for clarification from the officers? There's no issues from a highways point of view in the wording and language used in that amendment?
No, but I think originally it included and wider area. And I don't know if you, and surrounding areas.
You know.
Yeah. No, that's, that's fine.
Am I allowed a point of something? And I'm not sure what it might be. A point of pedantry, as well as being a geek, I'm a bit of a grammar pedant. The way that reads to me is that the committee are going to run the consultation. And I'm sorry that I just missed that. So.
You're suggesting a public consultation is held on solutions that will address.
That would be perfect, I think. Thank you.
Yes, right. All right, all right. Councillor Westinghouse, are you happy that the word public consultation appears in that wording? Yes. All right. So can we amend that to a public consultation? Is held or takes place? Democracy as we type. So I'm happy that councillor Westinghouse, are you happy that wording reflects your amendment? And councillor Wright, you're happy to, you're still happy to accept that?
I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank, thank. Now, might we proceed to anyone who wishes to contribute to the debate on this recommendation as amended? Vice Chair?
Very much. I've sort of been wrestling with the data and kind of feel I'm sort of halfway there now, but not quite where there. I mean, I mean, I think what this comes down to is there's lots of personal evidence, there's lots of opinions, but they sort of seem to point to Bovemore's Lane being the problem. I've not been clear that in any way I've seen evidence that opening Dryden Road will solve the problems of Bovemore's Lane. Now, that's, there's a bit of wrestling with data there that I'm sorry, I don't want to get back into that geek hole that I just crawled back out of. But the bit of Bovemore's Lane that has got more busy is the middle section around the A and E entrance. And the lower section of Bovemore's Lane doesn't appear to have got more busy. So maybe someone can speak to that later and take their own spin on it. But that's, that's mine. So I don't see, or I haven't heard, the opening Dryden Lane, Dryden Road will be the solution for Bovemore's. But I have heard lots of stories, I've spoken to a lot of people as well over the last couple of months. And, and, you know, there's people wanting the road open, there's people wanting the road closed. But what I, what I, I think the real question is, are there too many, sorry, I've lost my thread. Let me just jump back a second. The question feels to me is, are there too many vehicles on Bovemore's Lane? Can it cope with it? Is it, is it, is it, is it, what we don't have is an understanding of the pedestrian flows in that area as well. And we've heard to that today. What I, what I would like to, so this debate has gone so long, I've lost, I've lost the thread of all my, can I, can I come back to this? Just because it's got so complicated. I'm sorry, I'm going to just step out.
I will allow you a personal reset to gather your thoughts and come back to us with a qualified opinion. But could we point out to members, we are talking to the recommendation. You've had your questions on the report. So either you're talking in favour of a public consultation in this given area, or you're not in favour of a public consultation and would like to propose or suggest something else. So if we could focus, because as I said, members of the public have been with us and thank them for their contribution, but we need to focus on the recommendation that's in front of us or whether we wish to replace that recommendation in your contributions. Right. Councillor Byall?
Thank you, Chair. And I do note that the training you receive on chairing from Exeter City Council serves you well. Thank you. And I will stick to the recommendation and not trying to relive the decisions of 2022 or whenever. And I listened to Jamie and the rest of the team there. And I genuinely believe that, you know, you're not mad. So you will, because you said it, not me, you wouldn't be mad by listening. You will be able to listen to people in the room. You've listened, you will take things on board. And I think you would be mad if you came back with a very narrow and prescriptive set of recommendations. I know you're not going to do that. Because if you do, I think you get it. You will hear a lot in this room from residents as indeed committee members. So I think it's very important. Whereas people talked about trust, we have to trust you to do it, and I will trust you to do it. And you will evaluate the data going forward. You've heard from councillor Wright, who cross, not cross, well, yeah, the cross examination of the officers on the data and everything. I feel sure you will make sure it is presented in an understandable and comparative way. I think that's important going forward. And I think that is exactly what it is going forward. Chair, I am a cyclist and I do get, cycling in the middle of the road is dangerous, but we have to find a middle ground here this morning. And I think this brings it forward to that middle ground. I did cycle here and I heard remarks about the width of Dryden Road and everything else like that. Could it be done? And what I'm concerned about is that people are trying to use data or use arguments, use legislation as some sort of knockout blow to their argument. There is no clever knockout blow to any of this. We have to address the situation. We have a lot of people with a lot of well intended views, which we have to consider. Everybody's voice needs to be heard from both sides of the spectrum on all of this. And just a remark on length of roads. Look, one of the most dangerous places as a cyclist, I can tell you now, is transferring Exbridge, right? I come from Exwick, I go across and I'm cycling up Western Way. All right. So nobody needs to tell me Dryden Road won't be big enough or it won't be, because I'm telling you, that doesn't fit now. But that's the way it is. Okay. And I found that out again this morning. So in the search of perfection here, guys, in the search of perfection, we have to understand what good looks like. And so a good scheme could come forward. And that's what we're doing. We've got to try to not completely wipe the memory, but to put it one side, what has happened and all the arguments for and against all of that, and look at the opportunity this now brings us to do the best thing possible. Not the worst best option, by the way, and I've heard that phrase quite a bit here at County Hall lately. We need a good option to come forward. So we are a medieval city. One of the presenters made sure, you know, what we have to do in this city is learn to live together. And when I say living together, that is pedestrians, cyclists and road users. Everybody has a responsibility to each other on the road or on the pathway or wherever we go. And I think if we try to have it down that one side wins or loses, we are having a big problem ahead, Chair. So I think the consultation is appropriate. I think we need to go forward. I trust the officers that they will look at. I think they will bring us back a number of options. Hopefully, you'll discuss it with the ward members and adjacent with councillor Ead, as indeed councillor Nash, and yourself before it comes back to the committee for us to have a look at the various options. And we have it. My personal view is, Chair, it may well need to be a special meeting. Why I say that? To have a number of issues, because we've still got four or five items on this agenda. You know, we will be here until a Saturday if we're not careful. And we need to give it time because the public expect us to do it fine. So I'm supporting the consultation that we go forward. And we need to learn, we need to listen to all the voices. I know you're going to do the consultation right this time. You've had a lot of lessons from a previous consultation or lack of consultation elsewhere. I'm not going to say it. Elsewhere, we need to get it done right. And for those who say, why don't you just take it out now? All I would say to those people, I understand that position. But remember, you were most critical of the county and all the officers for not consulting properly in the first time, for not hearing your voice. You can't now turn around and say, we want to drive ahead, because we may or may not win a vote, and ignore consultation. So we're in this, whether people think it's a consultation trap, walking through Treacle or whatever, we have to do the consultation properly. Officers, Chair and the divisional members, it's really up to you to make sure those questions are the right questions and we get the right options back to this committee, so the public, the residents, and we can make a decision going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Byall. I've got. Councillor, councillor Wright, you will have the automatic right of reply as the mover of the.
That's fabulous. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yes. You can get your pocket calculator and do some more numbers for us. Councillor Westinghouse?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few observations, a plea to the officers. I believe there's a really significant amount of consensus already in what are apparently different views. And so, for example, I think there's not one person in this room or outside it who would say, one of the big issues on Bovemore's is the lack of safe crossings for pedestrians and cyclists. It's a, and, and I think you're absolutely right not to have taken on board material that isn't from the county, but the Exeter Green Party volunteers did account at the junction. And what struck, it's just an incredibly heavily used road by pedestrians longitudinally and across. And there are more crossing points than you think. So I think it, there should be a real strong focus on where there is already agreement that there's an issue. Another thing is that Wanford House and the RDNE, they are one campus. And so I would also urge you to kind of find ways to knock their heads together, because there may be solutions. And Andy tells me that there did used to be a way that, you know, and they, Wanford House asked for it to be taken away. But I think, you know, it's really important that that campus is treated together and that the organisations are talked to together. Yeah, I've said the thing about pedestrians, but there is no pedestrian count. And it's just essential that we understand pedestrian movements as part of this. And I would say this, wouldn't I? But actually, it does affect my ward, Newtown St Leonard's, because very significant numbers of people who work at the hospital travel from St Leonard's or even beyond, and they use Wanford Road, Dryden Road and so on. So there, you know, it is, it's just to underline that these things have tentacles out well beyond just the immediate area. It is a very heavily used. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nash?
I would like to amend the recommendation. So keeping the officer's comment. Obviously, as the elected member, I've received several emails, running into the hundreds about this. And I want to make sure that I'm giving my residents the voice that they so deservedly need because they've taken the time to contact me and I want to share that. So my recommendation will be we'll keep part one A. I feel that this has gone on for long enough now. It's been years of debate, going back five years. And I propose to strike out this motion and propose that Dryden Road is reopened. Bovemore's has been recently resurfaced and is not suitable for this level of traffic and will cost the taxpayer £200,000 every three to five years. There is already a TTRO in place for resurfacing on the road. I've received several emails from DPT staff pleading to open the road. They don't feel safe in the dark. It's taking longer to get patients over to the RDNE when they're having mental health crisis. And that's having an impact on staff. People are looking to the RDNE. They're looking to DPT hospice care, force cancer as their point of care. And they're struggling to get that access. Therefore, I would like to recommend that the committee instruct the relevant director to immediately rescind the TRO and remove all associated signage and infrastructure. Following the revocation of the TRO, Active Travel England to fund the design, implementation and integration of a safe way of passage for pedestrians and cyclists, maintaining desire lines and continuation of the E9 cycle path through funds available through the heart of Wanford Project, thus removing the traffic away from a residential road which is not designed to cope with this level of traffic.
I was just going to say, that sounds like a wrecking motion to me. And I would just like you to consider that.
Having, having attended my training last evening, Byall.
Having attended my training last evening by Exeter City Council, there are two routes that you can take through this, and it's at the discretion of the Chair. One is to accept it and then have a vote on it, and it either rises or falls in effect by that. Or the second view is to say, look, this effectively is negating the original, the exact opposite of the original motion. And the advice in that sense would be, your best route forward is to vote against the recommendation. And if that falls, I would then accept your amendment as the new recommendation, right? I am favouring, in order, in order to expedite things go forward, I believe the second route is the best, that I rule this amendment negates the original recommendation in front of us, but I accept it for, as a new resolution, if existing recommendation falls. And your, my view would be for you not to support the recommendation, because you don't want the recommendation to go forward. Thank you. Just getting the. I'm now on to councillor Stevens.
No, basically I supported Angela. I don't want to muddy the water, so I have the right to speak later.
Councillor Ead.
Thanks. So, yeah, I would speak in favour of the current recommendation. So I've also heard a lot of emails from residents about this, a lot in favour, a lot against since the last Hattock meeting. I have to say, it's interesting. I've been door knocking in Hebert Tree and Wipson Barton for over five years on Bovemores Lane, Butts Road, Church Terrace, all these surrounding roads. And not a single person has raised this with me previously. This is in stark contrast to the active streets trial in Hebert Tree and Wipson Barton, where most people raised that as an issue. So it's interesting that nobody has raised it before. Clearly there is an issue for people. So it will be good to get, get these letters out to people who are impacted. So I'm going to work with officers to make sure people who are affected by this get the letter, they understand what's going on, so their voices can be heard on this. So yeah, there seems to be agreement that there is issues that need resolving, and most of them are on Bovemores. So I'm happy that the recommendation now includes Bovemores specifically. So yeah, there's been talk of, there is increased traffic. I make it sort of around 27% increase on that stretch that's increased at the peak hour. I think it was, it was arranged from one to three vehicles per minute. If you take two vehicles, it looks to me like about 27% increase, which is significant. It's, it is odd, as councillor Ketchin pointed out, that further down, closer to Dryden Road, there hasn't been a significant interest. So where that traffic has come from isn't completely clear, I don't think. So I'm glad to hear there'll be engagement with the public, proper engagement this time to help shape the options. And I'm actually quite encouraged from what I've heard, from what a lot of people have said today. There does seem to be some agreement that we need to keep the E9 cycle route safe and that there are different ways of doing that. I haven't heard anybody say, let's get rid of it, and then who cares about cyclists? Nobody's been saying that. There are potentially alternatives. So it'd be good to get a good understanding of what everybody thinks the alternatives could be. And I actually cycled on that route here this morning. I live just on the other side of East Wanford Hill. I cycled in at about quarters of nine, so peak rush hour time. I was coming along East Wanford Hill, just coming to the bottom of Butts Road, looking up at Hebert Tree High Street, which was bumper to bumper with cars, people overtaking, trying to squeeze past buses. And I thought, I'm really glad I don't have to cycle up there. Took a left onto Butts Road, passed maybe two or three cars onto Bovemores Lane and then onto Dryden Road, completely quiet, calm. It was a lovely way to cycle. So I am a confident cyclist. I would have cycled up there if I had to. But a lot of people aren't, and having this alternative route is really important. We do need to protect it. But yeah, there are different ways that we could potentially do it. So yeah, there's been talk of potentially segregated cycle lanes, and hopefully we can look into like whether that's possible or not, because that could be a good solution. And so, yeah, I'm hopeful that the engagement will be pursued in good faith by everyone. I get, I get the impression that it will be, and it is a big cost. I do recognise that. That is a serious consideration. And there are other issues which my residents do want resolved, and this is going to push, push things further along. But I think on balance is the right decision.
Thank you. Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Chair. I think we can all agree that there is a problem with traffic. I think if you work in Exeter, if you live in Exeter, if you play in Exeter, you have to agree we have too much traffic. At different times during the day, sometimes the roads work well. But most of the time, when most people need to get from A to B within a specific timeframe, we've got a problem. This is looking at trying to find a solution. There's no change without impact. But the question is, does the impact from this, is the negative impact outweigh the benefit or vice versa? And that's what this consultation is trying to identify. So what's the wider impact? And that's what this consultation has been amended to achieve, is that it's wider than just Dryden Road. And what we need to hear as well is that we hear residents' views from wider. There was a speaker earlier that mentioned they are impacted by this, but they weren't asked their views on it. In mentioning that, I do need to kind of make very clear that we are where we are. And whilst there has been comments, rightly or wrongly, around previous processes, previous Hattock committees, I have great confidence in individuals that stand for public office, stand for the right reasons. They want to make the best decisions they can to benefit them, their neighbours, the city they live in, trying to do the right thing. So previous Hattock members will have made the best decision they could based on the data they were given. So I don't want to kind of dismiss decisions made previously, those individuals did the best they could. But we are where we are anyway. So I think we, I think it's pretty clear that when we look at the Dryden Road scheme as it stands, it doesn't answer the question, the solution that we need to help traffic flow around that area. Is Dryden Ring, Dryden Road scheme part of the solution that we need to find? Not all of it, part of it. Is it actually a negative result? And that's what this consultation again is trying to identify. I think when we look at some of the papers, we've got Appendix Two, which is page 18. It lists all the incidents going back to 2015, and it's pretty clear from those incidents that we're not just talking about Dryden Lane. Bovemore appears in it quite strongly, so does Barrett Road. It's, it clearly, this is a wider area issue. There is heavy traffic. We would all appreciate a reduction in that that's safe for all road users. And by road users, I mean those with motors attached to their road use or without. So I think this is a very useful consultation going forward. We've heard the framework to it, which is not, this is what we intend to do. Do you like it or not? Are we going to rip it out or keep it in? It is about hearing the solutions that are suggested, but listening to other solutions to try and come up with something through co-design that actually produces a solution. Having said that, we're humans. It's an incredibly diverse problem we're facing. It isn't going to be a perfect answer. There is going to have to be some balancing. But I think what I'm hearing is that stakeholders, those that we've heard quoted as, you know, the hospital, emergency services, et cetera, they will be consulted. The officers with them will come up with some options, push it out to the residents. Residents will put their solutions forward and will come up with the best solution we can. But just put my hand up that I recognise there is no perfect solution. We will have to seek a compromise. But I think what we all recognise is that what's currently there isn't solving the problem, and we need to move forward. So I support this recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Going to call upon councillor Wright, because I understand councillor Ketchin doesn't wish to come back from his recess. So I will call upon councillor Wright as the proposer of the amended motion to speak and close remarks, then we'll move to a vote.
Thank you, Chair. So today I've been called poser and a geek, but I won't take it to heart. Thank you very much. The really important thing for me here, as a member of the committee, is really getting clarity here as to what we're voting for here is, yes, yet another consultation. I hear, you know, we all sort of think, well, will it be meaningful? Will it be productive? I really think it will. This is what we were asking for. And yes, we don't want to keep harping back to things that maybe haven't worked so well in the past, but they do form part of our consciousness of where we are now. So that is part of the context. So a better context, which I really think is the mood of the room, is to not only listen to people saying, this didn't work for me, undo it. If we can all work together with, okay, let's, we're acknowledging this isn't working terribly well for some people, some areas, working better for others. What can we do collectively to make it work pretty well for everybody? And that is a real key. If this amendment doesn't go forward, if, sorry, this recommendation, if we don't collectively vote for that to happen and instead vote this down in order to vote for, let's remove it, there will still have to be a consultation, as we've heard. It's not a case that we can all walk out of here today and say, oh, great, we've just got that removed. No, apart from that, in my mind, being very undemocratic, because it will be making and compounding on perceived mistakes of the past, where some elected members perhaps have been thought to have made decisions, not just in this committee. All politicians are accused of it, of not listening and just going with using the power that you've got to do what you want to do. I think that would be a really bad move for all of us if we try to vote this down. We're giving voice to people properly. We're acknowledging the fact that previous consultations had flaws in them in some areas. So we're listening to people and we really hope that this, this would be a consultation where it's not, we're going to do this to you, do you like it or not? That's not it. It's please come forward with your ideas. You live in the area. You brief the fumes in the area. You cycle in the area, whatever it is, for local people to be able to say, we know this area, we're living in it, and we'd like to be able to come up with ideas of how we can all live in it in a really good, healthy way. So to not go for this and to think instead, let's just vote to take it out. We're then going to be limiting a consultation to 21 days rather than six weeks. So what can possibly happen in 21 days? It's going to give these residents, these neighbours in the neighbourhood, proper time to come forward with ideas. And if there was a statutory consultation just on removing this as a TRO, you wouldn't be asked what your ideas are. It would be, we're removing it, like it or not. It would be a really binary consultation, and that's exactly what we're trying to get away from. And instead of being very binary on our decision-making, binary on what we think is the right thing to do, we need to be properly inclusive and be able to listen to people and act upon what people are saying in the best way possible. And that's what we're here to do, and it's not easy, because one person will email you and say, please, I implore you, do what you know is right. Keep Dryden Road open. A minute later, you've got somebody else saying, please, I implore you, do what you know is right. Close Dryden Road. The opposite. So everybody thinks at the moment that their position is right. By sitting together, listening to each other more, then we start to get a better collective decision on what is right. And I think we can only do that by going forward in this really positive way for proper consultation, which isn't, like I say, is a decision. We're going to ask you to fill in a box. It's what have you got to say? What do you think? And we cannot do that if we instead vote this down and vote to remove the TRO, and we are then shutting down democracy, in my view. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Wright. The recommendation, besides the noting of the comments on the report, which we've done, is a public consultation is held on solutions that will address local traffic concerns while offering safe, attractive routes for people walking and cycling on Dryden Road, Bovemores Lane and surrounding area. That is the recommendation. It was duly proposed. It is seconded. Are there any members who wish their vote to be recorded? In other words, your name put down on thing that councillors X voted yes or no. If you do, would you please put your hands up if you wish for your vote to be recorded? Oops. Oh, we're getting busy. Keep your, keep your hands up so you now have to sign the pledge. Item eight on the agenda. Don't wait to have a recorded vote for apologies. Yeah, there's, you can fill them in later. I think the main thing is that could we move to a vote? Could all those indicate in the normal fashion by raising their hands who are in support of the recommendation? Those in favour of the recommendation, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six in favour of the recommendation. Those against the recommendation, please show. Four. And as Chair, I register an abstention. That recommendation is duly carried. Thank you. I hope all members, whatever your point of view, believe you've had a fair hearing and this matter goes forward. And we look forward to seeing you again in a few months' time. And can we now have just a few minutes recess to allow you to leave if you wish to? Yes. And if councillor Stevens is happy, could we carry forward his stakeholder's bus forum until the next meeting? That is all right. Item 11, matters taken under delegated powers are listed on page 25 and 26 of your agenda pack called Item 11, one relating to Hill Lane and the other one for various streets where members have been consulted. Are there any questions on that report? We have to formally vote?
No.
Just to note that, we note that report. Getting closer to Saturday, but we'll do. We have dates of next meeting are shown as January the 28th, April, et cetera, et cetera on it, and there are no part two items. You're free to go home now by bicycle, cycle, walk.
Close meeting.
And I now officially close the meeting. Thank you.